...America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg public access. So, we are all current members in attendance? Is there any public comment not related to the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, is there any board comment?
I have a board comment, Mr. Chair. I actually was at a father-daughter dance this past weekend, and I spoke with a gentleman who works in the health and human services field. He runs a facility that actually has a childcare aspect to it in Fitchburg. And we got to talking about permitting and childcare facilities, and his facility in Fitchburg is too small for their needs, their programs keep growing. And they researched the Reliant Medical Building, which is right on the Lunenburg-Fitchburg line, as a potential location for their services to move to. And unfortunately, due to the fact that there's now a marijuana retail facility across the street, they can't move there. And this is an issue that we, as a planning board, discussed at length when we were developing the marijuana bylaw, but I just thought it was interesting to see how essentially two uses are at odds now. And both of them, to a certain extent, receive protections from the state. The state has said that we, as a planning board in a community, cannot limit daycare uses from particular areas. We can't zone them out of town. And the thought process behind that is to make it easier for childcare facilities to get going and to keep childcare costs down. And they made similar legislation when it came to marijuana, because we were a yes community, we effectively couldn't zone it out without going through the ballot process and so on. And so now we have these two forces at odds, which I just thought was interesting and thought I should share.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Can we circle back to that at the end?
Sure.
Any input on that? No? Have input at the end, maybe?
I...
Okay.
It's just an observation. I don't know that we can really quote-unquote "do anything" about it, but here we've got a facility in town that unfortunately can't get reused because...
Well, it's not in Lunenburg. That's a Fitch...
It's Fitchburg, right?
There's a small corner of the parking lot of that.
Okay.
That's within the town, but the line, the entirety of the building is in Fitchburg.
Okay. All right. Any further board comment? Okay. We have on the first on agenda is an A&R plan for 425 West Townsend Road and 100 Howard Street.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself due to a financial interest in this process.
Certainly, thank you. Welcome.
Kimberly Gold, Vice Assistant Attorney for the Appellate. So, there's an A&R plan before you. We are going to sell a small portion of 400 square feet of property that was owned on 100 Howard Street. So, do a five-point review.
Yeah, if you can just outline, because I'm trying to understand it, too.
Well, Adam just pointed to the...
If you look at the larger locust map, there's two smaller parcels on West Townsend Road, and then if you look at the inset circle, the smaller of those two lots is the subject property that's receiving the sliver of land, which you'll see on the north side.
That little tiny piece?
That little...
100 square feet.
Okay. That little pie-shaped piece, okay. Okay.
And that's just for area?
My understanding... I lost my microphone. My understanding is the subject property is just under 30,000 square feet. The person who owns it or will own it is looking to build a three-bedroom home on it, and due to nitrogen loading requirements in Title V, you need a minimum of 30,000 square feet to install a septic system that meets those requirements.
What zone is it in?
It's an outline, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and the addition of land, per the building commissioner, does not take away that grandfathering, because it makes it more conforming, and it's a... They don't have the ability to gain other additional land, they just have the ability to get that small piece.
So, will that be deed restricted to three bedrooms? I mean, it really doesn't need...
By the Title V system.
By Title V it is, right, but...
I mean, the town is generally in the habit of deed restricting properties just because it's messy and complicated and takes a significant amount of administrative effort, but from a sale perspective, they'd be limited.
So, it's nitrogen-sensitive because of the soil absorption and the well on-site?
That's just the Title V rays, saying that you can't...
You need 10,000 square feet per bedroom.
Yeah, per bedroom.
So, that's why it's restricted?
Correct.
Because it's on-site, well and sewer.
I would make a motion to approve the A&R for 425 West Townsend Road and 100 Howard Street.
Second?
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yep.
The pen's dying.
Why do you think you only have to send the one?
Is this mine or yours?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think it might be mine.
Yeah, I think it's yours.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing, continued from 127 for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue.
My name is Frank McMartin from Leachville, Grand Representative of the Appellate, Dan G. Parker. After the previous meeting, there were a few questions we were left to address from the board, as well as a review letter from Graves and Engineering that dated the 27th of January. It also says on comments we have to send from the Conservation Commission, which we have addressed on our plans as well. So, I'd like to go through my responses to those comments, as well as the Graves and Engineering response to the letter. With regard to the town Lunenburg Planning Board, top plans, which was roughly half of the ACB, does the stormwater basin meet the requirement for area critical concern? The stormwater basin as submitted previously to the board did meet the ACB requirements for Standard 6 of the stormwater handbook. Table CA-2, Standard 6, and CA-3, Standard 6 of the stormwater handbook highly recommend any infiltration basins for stormwater discharge within area critical concern, provided that the BMB provides 1-inch times the impervious area of the waterfall volume and 44% TSS removals prior to the discharge into the infiltration capacity. The stormwater basin as it was designed provides 7,555 cubic feet of volume between elevations 400 and 401. When we exclude the volume within the sediment four base, that provides 6,484 cubic feet of water volume. The required amount with that 1-inch times the impervious area is 6,483 cubic feet. So, we're just over that requirement. The 44% TSS removal is achieved utilizing deep stump, coated catch basins, and the sediment four base. The deep stump, coated catch basins are to be provided as part of future development of the parcel. At this time, there's no planned impervious surface surfaces. It will be earth removal, controlling the material that's down to stay stabilization. There will be no on-site impervious and internal conditioning at all. The plans have been revised to document this treatment trend, so we're... Picks this up after I've finished my engineering visit, this permit, we'll see that the plans were designed for a certain amount of impervious surfaces, that same 77,800 square feet, and what the design plan treatment trend for TSS removal is. So, that's all the options, and all along the plans. The second Planning Board comment is that soil maps for this area is primed agricultural soils. Will previous history of agricultural on the property have any impacts on nitrogen or phosphorus calculations in the stormwater report? To the best of the Appellate's knowledge, property has previously been a horse farm, and therefore will not have significant impacts on nitrogen or phosphorus calculations. The stormwater handbook, Chapter 2, Volume 2, Chapter 2, documents that stormwater management areas providing any infiltration remove 50% to 60% total nitrogen and 60%, 70% of total phosphorus. So, even if this was an area with higher loadings of nitrogen and phosphorus, like an actively fertilized field, the proposed stormwater management would reduce nitrogen and phosphorus from any product. The board had requested that the applicant provide a document by client sequencing and stabilization for earth removal. We revised the construction sequence and notes on Sheet 3, 3.1, to document this. The obligated sequence is as follows. One, construct stabilized construction entrance and access road. Two, install erosion control barriers around the perimeter of the site as shown on Sheet 3.0. Three, construct proposed stormwater management area, installing erosion control barrier along the top of the site and stabilizing as shown on Sheet 3.0 and Sheet 3, 3.1. So that erosion control barrier reference there was added during this process. It's to provide separation between the top of the stormwater area and the area of active removal, just as an extra amount of erosion control. Step four, yeah, step four, strip and stockpile alone for on-site screening reuse. Step five, strip subgrade material to finish grades and transport oxide. Six, temporarily stabilize the active areas of earth removal with straw waddles and woodchips as shown on Sheets 3.0 and 3.1. Seven, permanently stabilize areas where earth removal is complete as shown on Sheets 3.1 and 3.1. And then Item 8 is maintain all erosion control measures around the perimeter of the site and in all active areas of earth removal for the duration of earth removal activities. Plan Board Comment number four is on the board, has to be applicant identify all the planned areas where long will be screened, and the manner of soil erosion and sediment control will be implemented. So, the erosion control sheet, Sheet 3.0, has been updated to identify this location. I'll just point that out on the plan. So, that location was set at the end, and the proposed stabilized access road. This rectangle here represents a screen of... What's that? Straw... It's watching its eyes, and then this represents watching me a 500 cubic feet stockpile. The intent is for the downhill side of this area to be fenced off with erosion control barrier to prevent runoff of the long swallowing screen stockpile.
What type of barrier?
Erosion control barrier, so that would be... That's the silk fence and straw...
So, it's just going to be a silk...
The head, yes.
A silk fence?
Yes.
Look at that. The detail on 3.1.
3.1?
Yes, so, anywhere I say erosion control barrier on the plans, it's a silk fence and a yellow.
Okay.
Can you show us where the straw waddles will be used rather than the silting fence?
Yes. The straw waddles have called out specifically as mid-slope stabilization on this upwind side, and those are also noted in the plans for, as needed, sort of erosion control. These straw waddles would generally remove the runoff site fairly easily, whereas a silk fence and straw yelp line is dug in and stick in, that tends to be more permanent In Graves and Engineering letter dated February 10th, in response to the... In response to our response to the Planning Board comments, they noted that the Planning Board has four questions of the Design Engineer, which responses were provided at the beginning of the Design Engineer's letter, dated February 4th and February 6th. GEI has no issues with the Design Engineer's responses, and then please note that Phase 2's compliance with best DP stormwater standards can't be confirmed until the future Phase 2 development plans are submitted for Phase 2. Any questions on the Planning Board responses, or should we continue on with the Graves Engineering comments? Even?
No, I can wait until...
My only comment was, I think, in the previous review letter, didn't Graves make a comment about woodchips not being used?
Yes, I'll give that.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's in his individual remarks.
Okay. So, are you just going to adjust the note that says using woodchip?
So, what happened with that really here? Jeffrey had asked that I had had this entire area temporarily stabilized with the woodchips. He had said that was fine on the flat area, however, this strip where it's... Where there's a little more pitch on the ground, he asked that that be grassed soon.
Okay.
So, getting into the Graves and Engineering comments. Comment one, GEI has no issues relative to compliance with the stormwater and Storm 2 bylaw, and that was on the early submit of plans that they made earlier. Item two, a signature block for the endorsements of the Planning Board must be included on the plans. Plans have been revised to provide a signature block for the Planning Board endorsement. Item three, GEI reviewed the hydrology computations and found the order relative to pre-development and Phase 1 post-development conditions, provided that Comment 4 below is addressed. Phase 2 post-development computations appear to be reasonable, however, can't be confirmed until the future phase 2 development plans are submitted for Phase 2 permanent. Our sponsors acknowledge any future development of parcel will be required to undergo site plan approval and document compliance with Section 204 of the Lunenburg Code, as well as stormwater regulations. Item four, with regards to geographical error on Sheet C21, inward elevation to the 3-foot wide gear is shown as 401.0, while the hydrology computations with the inverse flow of 2. The construction detail on Sheet C2.1 is revised to reflect the calculations. Item five is compliance with the MassDP stormwater handbook is reasonable for Phase 1, except as noted in the 3.1 comments. Comment six, stormwater basin berms constructed in fill need to have a core of low impermeability soil to prevent lateral water seepage for long-term stability in the basin. The construction details calling out the impervious core in the basin have been added to the drawings on Sheet C2.1. The impervious core is to be constructed out of material meeting the Mastock M1.08.0 impervious soil bar specification. That response we documented on the cross-section of the basin with a note with the core depicted on the cross-section, and a note saying that wherever the berm is to be constructed in fill, it is to have it in impervious core. So, it's not required in a situation like Cross Section A, where the basin is fully in cut, but in Cross Section B, where the berm is elevated and in fill, does require Item seven, perimeter erosion controls should be provided to the east side of the entrance between the earth removal area and new culvert under the driveway to reduce the amount of sediment that can enter the concentrated flow path at the culvert. Sheet 3.0 of the erosion control plan has been revised to provide additional perimeter controls to protect the temporary culvert under the temporary stabilized construction So, that is this additional silk fence and straw yelp line, that's oblong, that's out, that's just to protect the proposed temporary culvert. For MassGIS, the southern portion of the site is located in Zone 2 of a public well, and therefore MassDP Standard 6 applies. The Zone 2 boundary needs to be shown on plans, and the stormwater report needs to be revised to recognize the Zone 2. This response here, the original appellate response is correct. I read this, and then I looked at the Lunenburg GEI stat. I confused previously the Lunenburg Zone 3 boundary, which is almost exactly the same on our parcel, as the MassDP Zone 2. So, the stormwater basin as designed does meet the requirements of Standard 6 for Zone 2. Those are the same requirements as plans in NACD, ECS, critical area. So, that doesn't change the design. My response, I just got overexcited when I found an answer that I thought was correct. And Graves does go into that in their response. Item nine, GEI recommends that Sheet C3.0 be revised to protect grass or other vegetative cover instead of woodchips at the south end of the site on slope from elevation 410 and lower. Waver-shaped woodchips on slopes can be prone to disposal by runoff. So, that was where Sheet 3.0 has been revised to call up use of grass cover at the south end of the site from elevation 410 to the limit of the disturbance. Item 10, Phase 2 hydrology calculations show that there is only 0.89 feet of freeboard as measured from the top of the berm to the peak water surface elevation during a 100 year storm event. A minimum of 1.0 feet of freeboard must be provided. We reworked the basin adjustment, it's uncomfortable slightly. The bottom of the basin was 5 feet, it's now 7, and that pushed it 2 feet into the site for not back towards the wetlands. That adjustment now provides 1.5 feet of freeboard, so we exceed that 1.0 feet of freeboard requirement of the basin. Item 11, during the design of Phase 2, riprap A-abinions will need to be added for the three future discharges into a stormwater management area from drain manhandle 01 to Phase 2 and 03. We revised the plan to add riprap A-abinions at this time as part of Phase 1, as the intent is to fully construct the stormwater management area and then not touch it for whatever future development happens at the parcel. I would then to perform the routine maintenance here. So, these riprap A-abinions are shown at the end of the pipe here in this forebay, here in this forebay, and in the middle, and then here and here in this forebay at the end. One of those A-abinions is for the drain manhandle and discharge pipe, and the other is for this conveyance pipe that sends a little more water in into the basin and tugs it dry before it goes on the mass pad. Graves asked that the drainage pipe size, slopes, and lengths should be included on all the plans. The drainage pipe sizes, slopes, and lengths have been divided in a table on Sheet C2.0. Item 13, the Design Engineer should consider shifting the outlet control structure to the west a few feet to allow water in the southern and northern portions of the stormwater management area to pass by the outlet control structure freely and provide cover over the outlet pipe. And the outlet control structure has been shifted to the west into the berm to allow this to happen. Considering... Item 14, considering the size of the rear openings, the outlet control structure detail on Sheet C2.1 should include a bar back across the rear openings, and we did add that to the detailed sheet. And then Item 15, the drain manhandle detail on Sheet C2.1 should be revised to include an in-rig channel, if we play a brick or cast and place concrete. The drain manhandle details on Sheet C2.1 have been revised to include an in-rig channel. The detail has been revised, indicate that the channels are to be constructed as part of Phase 2. The orientation of upstream pipes isn't known at this time, and we didn't want to construct an in-rig channel and then have to possibly jack that and run out the construction area and rig channel, or be locked in into a pipe orientation that wasn't optimal in the future. Graves and Engineering did respond to these responses, the letter dated February 10th. Item one, GEI has no further issues relative to compliance with the stormwater and stormwater bylaw, which is the same as in the 127 letter. Item number two, acknowledge a signature block has been added each sheet. Item number three, GEI reviewed and revised hydrology computations and found to be never relevant to pre-development and Phase 1 post-development conditions. Again, the Phase 2 post-development computations appear to be reasonable, but can't be confirmed until future Phase 2 development plans are submitted for Phase 2 permit. Item four, acknowledge the 3-foot wide gear elevation has been revised. Item five, compliance with the Massstormwater Handbook is reasonable for Phase 1. Item six, acknowledge has been noted that impervious cores will be provided for brush construction in fill. Item seven, acknowledge perimeter erosion controls have been provided on the east side of the entrance. Item eight, acknowledged, the plans last revised February 4th show the MassDP Zone 2 boundary, and the plans last revised February 6th show the Lunenburg offload protecting Zone 3, which is co-linear with the MassDP Zone 2 boundary. The portion of the site south of this boundary is involved, the MassDP Zone 2 and the County Lunenburg Water Supply Protection District, Zone 3. Also, the stormwater report was revised to recognize the stormwater discharge to a critical area, the MassDP stormwater Standard 6. GEI has no issues relative to Phase 1's compliance with Standard 6. Phase 2's compliance with... Phase Two's compliance with Standard Six can be confirmed until future Phase Two development plans are submitted for Phase Two permitting. Item nine, acknowledged sheet C3.0 has been revised to those of low and seed in the above mentioned area. Item 10, acknowledged the proposed stormwater management area has been revised to provide a minimum of 1.0 feet of freeboard from the top of berm to the peak water surface elevation during the 100 year storm event. Item 11, acknowledged riprap aprons have been provided at each concentrated flow discharge point into the stormwater management area. Item 12, acknowledged a drainage pipe schedule has been added to sheet C2.0. Item 13, acknowledged the outlet control structure has been shifted west into the berm. Item 14, acknowledged a bar rack has been provided on to be installed across the rear opening. Item 15, acknowledged the drain manhole detail on sheet C2.1 has been revised to include an impervious channel. That combined with their response to, response to the plan or comments, reads to me like a fairly clean review response from the engineering.
Comments, concerns, questions?
I remain concerned about this project. An A C E C or an area of critical environmental concern is a place that in Massachusetts that is especially recognized because of the quality, uniqueness, and significance of their natural and cultural resources. And designation of an A C E C increases environmental oversight. And I remain concerned about the environmental impact of this project and specifically in regards to Phase Two. I did look into the MEPA requirements and the environmental notification requirements for a project within an A C E C. And contrary to the letter that we received from our Conservation Commission agent, I have had communication with him as well as the chair of the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission chair now agrees that the regulations do require a MEPA review and an ENF. According to section 310 CMR, 11.03 number 11, any project within an A C E C unless the project consists solely of one single family dwelling requires ENF and other MEPA review if the secretary so requires. So we have not heard yet back from DEP, a DEP number has not been assigned to this project. I don't know, has it been submitted to MEPA or has it not?
It has not.
Okay, so I believe it does need to go to MEPA. We have not received comments from DEP as to their concerns regarding this project within an A C E C. And I believe because our requirements are stormwater protection and more stringent requirements within an A C E C, I would propose that we hold off on voting on this until we hear from the environmental agencies that have jurisdiction. I am, I also have concerns relative to, a statement was just made that their intent is to leave the stormwater management in place for the proposed Phase Two. Yet, when you look at the stormwater report, it talks about the fact that since no impervious area will be added to the site during the proposed project, water quality volume calculations were not required, since no impervious area will be added to the site during the proposed project, recharge calculations are not required. So a lot of the things that would have been done if the impervious area were added were not completed.
And those have been submitted in the revised stormwater.
They were?
They were, yes.
Okay.
And the basin itself is fully compliant for TSS removal, TSS pre-removal.
Okay, it's the minimum, the 40.
In the event that a 77,000 yard square feet per project comes through there all along the future. So it's overdesigned for the interim condition.
Okay.
And the basin itself isn't built for the project intent of doing it directly upfront.
Okay, the higher potential pollutant load, if you're doing a pavement, a parking lot, isn't that a higher potential pollutant load?
Parking lot in a non-impervious zone is a high potential pollutant.
Okay, because, you know, I personally would like to wait until, what happened at the Conservation Commission hearing?
Conservation commission hearing was continued because we don't have another.
Okay. So I, similar to what the Conservation Commission has done, given the fact that MEPA review may be required, given the fact that DEP has not yet commented on this project, I would propose that we continue this hearing until such time as we receive those comments. As stated in our regulations, the Conservation Commission is a critical component of stormwater permits, and I think that until such time as the Conservation Commission is satisfied and completed their review, and given the fact that I now have verbiage from the chairman that he does believe a MEPA review is required, I don't think it's prudent for us to vote on this tonight.
All right, public hearing, public. Questions, comments? Mr.?
Thanks, Frank. I'm going to go to your second place, so just wanted to put a follow-up on that. We have three local departments that we need to pick up. Earth removal, permit from your board relative to your stormwater bylaw, and a Conservation Commission approval. All three of those are mutually exclusive. And what I mean by that is to say that we cannot remove soil from the site unless we have all three of them. So we can't, to put jurisdiction of another board, to use jurisdiction that's under another board into permitting process with your jurisdiction, I just, we can't, even if you don't, you know, correctly just operate under your jurisdiction permit, we still can't move the project. We have to get the DEP board permission through the Conservation Commission. So it really is hard for us to move forward when we're kind of just one commission board says, oh, we have to wait for that commission board, and it's just pretty difficult. The A C E C, I guess, is there a specific question that you have relative to the compliance that we have relative to the U C?
The specific concerns that I have is this proposed site drastically changes its geography within an area of critical environmental habitat. Additionally, it's going to discharge water and suspended solids to an environmentally sensitive area. That wetland is absolutely an environmentally sensitive area. Having done a lot of stormwater work, I know that stormwater is one of the leading contaminants and pollutions in the state of Massachusetts. Therefore, that's why the MS4, that's why the new stormwater regulations. I believe we should be seeking to go further, especially within an A C E, than to meet the minimum requirements of 44% total suspended solids. And as to your comments relative to the other boards, my concern is relative to the environment, which is what our stormwater permit is specifically to address, and it requires more stringent management within an A C E C. I believe that until the Mass Environmental Protection Agency and until DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, comment, regardless of what conservation moves forward, I believe it is absolutely appropriate that the planning board have that feedback because it may impact the design significantly. I believe our job here because of the stormwater regulations is to protect the environment. I want to be assured that that is happening, and in order to do that, I need the information from MEPA as well as from DEP.
Okay, well, the MEPA process is completely separate process.
I understand that, I've gone through it.
So I just want to be clear that, I guess I just respectfully, I'm not trying to disrespect you, I disagree that you need that information for this permit. We've talked to, now your peer review consultant has told you that we meet the requirements of your bylaw, which is what you're reviewing. We've overdesigned this, so I want to be clear here too. There is a commercial project coming on this site. When we first sat down and talked about this site, the last thing we wanted to do was come in here and have any perception that we're pulling a bait and switch. So we made the decision in a public forum to say, although we're asking for earth removal at this stage, there's a commercial project coming. We're trying to be transparent with respect to that to the community. We do not want to come in here and say, oh, no, it's just an earth removal permit, and have you see us six months later and say it's a commercial project. That's sort of number one. Number two is to say that in spite of that, this permit today is only for earth removal. We have to come back before you for anything we do relative to a commercial site. We have to go through development plan review, we probably have to, we have to go back to the Conservation Commission. We'll likely have to at least modify this permit, if not file a new one, because of the new stormwater management features, the additional stormwater management features we'll have on the site. But at this time, that basin is really well overdesigned for what we're proposing. There's no impervious area proposals in this at all. So when you look at runoff calculations, if we were to analyze this just for the condition that we would have with no impervious cover, it would be factor of safety overdesigned. We have a lot, there's no, there's no TSS removal calculation that can be done because we don't have any impervious area. We're not going to have any runoff impervious sites. We've anticipated it in the future so that we don't have to go back in and disturb areas within the buffer zone again because we felt that we could responsibly overdesign that for a future build-in condition. But with the application of the JAP today, it's significantly overdesigned. I just wanted to say that. The, I was going to train a thought, I had something else to say. So I guess I'll leave it at that. Get to work again, that's it. I appreciate your time.
Please, thank you. Public comment, please step up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is King Antonio. I own a property at Fort Townsend Harbor. I was not aware of this project until our neighbors, the project owner, I was not aware of anything, no letters, no anything, no signed mail, anything. So I went to a little meeting and listened to what they had to say. I have a concern because of Fort Townsend Harbor and the wetlands there. It's a major issue to me because of the loops I've had to jump through to bring that property up to code and make it beautiful. We're still working on it. But my concerns are the runoffs, the environmental hazard, environmental runoffs that eventually, not now, but down the road, you know, somebody didn't clean out a ditch basin, that thing overflows, next thing I know, my house is flooded because I'm not that high off the wetlands. I have issues with this. And not seeing any of the grinds, not seeing any of the stuff, I think, I think I should have some time to look at it before, you know, something should be decided on where it's going to impact my property.
Sure. All the plans are available to the planning board?
I just knew about this yesterday.
Well, then, also, there is no requirement for a body notification for stormwater?
Well, I have two letters, and I didn't want to take that in the box.
Well, that's a different application. I understand, I understand, just, there is no requirement for body notification.
I just have a concern about that.
Sure, sure, it's valid.
You know, not just the environmental impact that's going to take on the wetlands that, you know, affects my property, but, you know, the wildlife that was there, the beavers, the frogs, all that other stuff that lived in there, you know, that was all brought to my attention when I was going. You know, it's just, I have issues with this, and I haven't got, I think I've had wrapped around the whole thing yet. And, you know, I give a pocket of plans, I'll give it to my site engineer, let him take a look at it and see what he's concerned about.
Sure.
You know, as a moving forward, it just, I just think it's, there's some time.
So there is an upcoming Conservation Meeting on this?
I don't know.
Yes, on the 19th.
Yeah, okay, so I would recommend that you go to the Conservation Commission meeting on the 19th?
On the 19th, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, that will help.
Very good.
You know, now it's been brought to my attention, now I can see what's on the other end. You know, I mean, I look up like that, I see horses, I don't want to look up and back in and see, you know, dust on it. You know, I have a challenge.
Sure.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
At the apartment 529 Masthead, I guess directly to you, Paul, you seem to have a lot of concern about the raise, the water comes off that hill, it goes through the wetlands country. So why do you feel like if we're going to put in an expensive basin that's going to treat everything, the best worst are the wetlands? It's unconfutable, right now, everything goes into the wetlands.
When you talk about treating, I mean, yes, it's going to be retained, but one of the concerns I have, and I guess this is a question for your engineer, when you talk about 44% total suspended solids removed, what is the requirement for the amount of impervious area that you're proposing?
The requirement for the total amount of impervious areas that we're proposing is, as in my response, 6,400.
So it's just slightly over?
Yeah, so we're, we're, what's that be over?
So to answer your question, when we talk about the, when you're talking about earth removal and you're keeping it as earth, first of all, it's not vegetated. So when you talk about infiltration, that's why we talk about grass swales versus woodchips because it provides an extra level of infiltration. When you get to the area and we talk about Phase Two of this project, it's no longer being infiltrated over a course of a field. It's going from a paved area that's been potentially sanded and salted, pulled off, and then put into a detention swale to be quote treated. And to remove just barely over what is required within an area of critically environmental concern is not sufficient, in my opinion. I believe having given the information and just seen a stormwater report on a particular body of water in which is vastly negatively impacted by nutrient loading and by stormwater. And when I look at what happened at Lake Shirley and the issues there dealing with stormwater, and I look at the 319 grant that was done, and I look at what's happening in other communities, that's why I'm concerned.
Okay, so, but again, we're doing everything that's required by law.
I understand that.
But, but, we used to feel like that's enough.
For, for an area of critical environmental concern, do I believe that the minimum is sufficient? No, I don't. And I would like to hear from environmental agencies, MEPA and DEP, that they would agree that the level of protection is sufficient within this environmentally sensitive area because it is. When you look at the wetlands of the Cowdery Lot and you look at the area across Masthead in which it extends, it's a wide swath of, of critical habitat. And when you put this kind of stormwater solution into an area of environmental habitat, do we meet the minimum? Yes. Can you assure me that there's not going to be negative impacts? I don't believe you can, just on my own experience and what I've seen in other towns. I've attended numerous stormwater seminars, I've attended, I've done a tremendous amount of research, I probably have an entire full cabinet full of just stormwater information. So am I concerned about this project? Yes, I am. Am I as concerned about Phase One as Phase Two? Not necessarily. But given the fact that two environmental agencies have an opportunity to weigh in on this, I would like to hear their input before we take a vote, and I would like to see more than just the minimum.
Well, basically, the Conservation Board said that, you know, the plan that Kusama Gillis was an accident plan. And fortunately, we had several issues with that, that's why we don't have the DEP bylaw, that was really just something that lost the balance, it's just something that, otherwise we'd be standing in for the DEP bylaw, just because.
Okay.
I guess I don't want to say why we get a letter from Matt Morrow, who's an employee by the town, is the agent for the town, he tells us that we don't have to do something, but then you tell us that he won't.
Absolutely, because I am on a board that is required to look at the standards for an A C E C, so I did that. And I now have correspondence from the chairman of the Conservation Commission that based on his reading of the regulation, he tends to concur with me. So in my opinion, is that due diligence my job? Yes, because I have done filings within an A C E C, and I know that a MEPA review is triggered.
If I might interrupt here, what is the proposed impervious on Phase One?
Zero.
Right, what is the runoff?
The runoff, I have to check.
For zero impervious?
It's in the.
I guess the bigger question, is it, is there any required TSS removal for no impervious?
Do you mean what's the runoff from, what would be the runoff from this site?
Phase One.
Phase One, yeah. Do you have that?
Yes.
I also just wanted to say that we're not doing the, we're, outside our way. Should I pull off?
Yeah, probably.
I also just wanted to say that we're not doing the minimum, we're, we're... outside, I'll wait. Should I pull off?
Yeah, probably.
Got to make noise for her to be able to hear.
Yeah.
I guess, do I need to talk to make sure it's good?
We're good.
All right.
Thumbs up.
Okay, good. The, if you're not in a critical area, you have to treat a half an inch runoff over the impervious area, and the 44% TSS removal prior to recharge is not tripped. If you are at a critical area, the half-inch water quality volume goes up to one inch, and you have to treat, you have to document that you're removing 44% TSS prior to infiltration. And that's all done based on, all those removal rate efficiencies are given to us, dictated to us in the Stormwater Management Handbook. So, a deep-sung-footed catch basin, which will be installed as part of the Phase Two, would provide you 25% pretreatment. A sediment floor bay, which we have on the plans today, provides you another 25% TSS removal. I don't want to go through a very fancy math problem, but those two in series give you 44% TSS removal before you infiltrate into the bottom of the basin. Now, as a separate TSS removal standard, which I think is Condition Three, if I'm not, Standard Three of the Stormwater Management, any site has to provide 80% TSS removal prior to discharge off-site. So, there's sort of two different TSS things you have to worry about. We're providing, in any case, we're providing 80% prior to being discharged off-site. We just have the additional, because we're in a critical area of an environmental, area of environmental, critical environmental concern, AC/EC, which I just want to make sure is clear, we are not in a habitat area. This is not an estimated or priority habitat area. It's an AC/EC, and that's it. We have an additional TSS threshold that we sort of have to, to meet before we get to the ultimate discharge, and that's the 44%. So, I just wanted to be clear, we're not at a minimum, we've actually bumped up from the basic standard. The zone, the, the critical zone requires that we bump that up even further. I also just want to point out that, kind of to Dan's point, Standard One or Two, I can't, I think it's Two, uh, the, the, one of the first standards, and sort of basic fundamental standards of the Stormwater Management Policy, is that we cannot discharge more water, peak rates more than the predeveloped condition. So, we, you have to do, employ better management practices on your site as part of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy to document that that's the case. So, that's the, the other reason why we have that. The entire section of the property, lower portion of the property where the runoff will, will run to, will collect all the runoff from the site and attenuate the rate of runoff that goes off-site so that, in the post-developed condition, it's at or less, I believe a less, I'm not sure what your deduct is, but at or less than what it is in the predeveloped case. So, I don't want to speak out of turn, Frank, but, that's it, that's all I had.
Speaking to that, uh, State Standard Two, Peak Rate Attenuation, there are three tables in, in the stormwater report, a table for Drain Point DPA, Drain Point B, and Drain Point C. Drain Point B and C are areas that are uncollected and are flowing off matching existing conditions, smaller areas. Drain Point A represents the area collected by the, the Stormwater Management Basin. Under the pre-development condition for Drain Point A, under the two-year storm, 3.34 CFS of water, cubic feet per second of water is flowing off the site. Under Phase One, that's 0.72 CFS with this basin. Under Phase Two, it's 1.45. So, even under the fully built, built-out condition, we're anticipating a 50% reduction in the runoff from the two-year storms, which are the, the frequent storms. The 10-year storm event for pre-development is 7.58 cubic feet per second. For Phase One, it's 3.38 cubic feet per second, and then for Phase Two, our, our proposed is 5.54 CFS. So, we, we again, we have a, a significant decrease in runoff from the site in the 10-year storm. Under the 25-year storm, the pre-development flow is 10.26 cubic feet per second. Under Phase One, it's 3.88 CFS, and Phase Two, it's 7.89, again, a significant reduction. The 100-year storm event, under pre-development conditions, is 14.13 CFS of water flowing towards the basin, towards the, the wetland and on, and the basin did discharge. Under Phase One, that's reduced to 4.43 CFS, and Phase Two, that's, that's reduced to 8.9. So, we have, we've planned for significant drainage runoff reductions with, with the, the, the design of this basin. Under, under the interim Phase One condition, those runoff reductions are anywhere from a quarter to a third of the existing runoff. So, that is a significant amount of, of water being captured and attenuated by, by the basin and metered out slower.
What's the existing runoff pre, pre-development?
Um, for the two-year storm, it's 3.34. For the 10-year storm, it's 7.58.
7.58, I just missed the two-year, yeah, okay.
Yep, okay.
10.26, 13.13.
10.26 and 14.13.
Yeah.
And then for the Drain Point B and, and C, those pretty well match up with, with the existing conditions. C has some, Drain Point B is more, more or less ma, matching existing conditions, some slight reduction, not, not, not really significant. And then Drain Point C, because we're pulling water into the basin in that area and reducing what flows to drain, Drain Point C, under proposed conditions, those reductions are approximately, approximately reduced by half, but they're, they're relatively small flows.
So, I guess my question should have gone to Paul first, does the MEPA review require for site alteration, or just?
Anything within an AC/EC other than a single-family home?
So, just here.
I'm sorry?
There requires a permit.
Right, okay. And this requires a permit?
State permit. Yeah, so, the MEPA, and I, I don't have them, I don't have a photographic memory, but AC/EC trigger is any, any work within a, an AC/EC that requires a permit. Permit is a capital P and is defined. The definition of permit is any activity undertaken, basically, a permit is anything given by the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, the only trigger that we would have here is the triggering of a, a full-blown mass-access permit. That's the only state permit we need in this, for this project. We are not getting a full-blown state mass access, uh, mass access permit for this, this portion of the project. They're only giving us a temporary permit. It's going to expire, and it's only for the removal of the gravel. We have to go and get a full permanent access permit when we do the full project. They can't, DOT has told us that they cannot give us one, we'd like to get a permanent one, uh, right now, because we don't want to do it again, but they will not give us one because they don't know what the nature of the, the final, um, commercial project is, and it's actually reasonable. I, I, you know, that's not a, a reasonable request. So, um, my view is we do not have a state permit here because we're not, uh, we're not going to have a permit that is, we, we have to do a, a full mass-access permit at the time of the new, of the new, of the new project. So, it may be appropriate to file for a MEPA at that time, uh, because at that time, we'll certainly clearly have a, a mass DOT permit, and we'll be, we'll have work within an AC/EC. So, that's my two cents.
So, you don't have to get a DOT per cut?
We have to get a, we need a temporary one to use the proposed access there.
And?
But they make a distinction, they give a, they either give you a temporary or a permanent, and they're giving us a temporary.
Would you concur that a temporary access permit would not be the state permit that's required by MEPA to trigger the...
I would need to look at that a little bit further, which is what I'm trying to do now.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't, I, I should have asked you to wait, because this, I wanted to hear the public comment, because this is the public hearing.
Okay, that's fine.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Sorry, I probably overstated my welcome too.
No, not at all, not at all, not at all. It's just public period for the abutters and the people concerned. So, please, come up and address your concerns.
I'm Bonita Martin, I live at 68 Townsend Harbor Road, and we are the abutters on the top side, okay? And between our driveway and the, the property line, we have a little small incline with trees, but not very heavy, and a lot of them are very, very old, and will be rotting and eventually probably falling down. There are some pine there, a little bit concerned about their root base. It certainly is not going to block noise or block dust. And we bought our property because of where it was, and we are really sad about all of this. We are very into wildlife, and this is going to be, along our property line is the deer path. We have wetlands too. We're all retired, we're home a lot, and we'll be listening to this noise. We work in our yards, we're out there gardening, our neighbors Pam and Cliff are always on their farmer's porch, and we don't even know what the next phases are supposed to be. Mr. Proctor told me that his son was interested maybe in building a house on that land. I don't know whether that can be done with commercial. I've also been told two things, that it can either be 20 feet from our property line or 50 feet from our property line, it's not going to make a lot of difference to us. We are concerned about our house values, being so close to this that people aren't going to want to build, come and buy a house if it's going to be at, behind a gravel pit. I also think of the town. We moved here 18 years ago, love the, the town, we have no children in the system, but we just enjoy the town and its aesthetics. And as you come in from air, you have beautiful homes, you hit the school, you hit a little mom and pop's place, you hit the puppet theater, you hit this beautiful plot of land that had horses on it, then the house that has just been lovely renovated, I mean, their whole backyard is going to be dirt, they won't even be out for a barbecue. And then you move up towards center of town, a few small little very neatly kept businesses, some more houses, the school, and on in. And I just feel really sad for the town to have a gravel pit in the middle of it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Resnickovich, I'm Bonnie's husband, I also live at 68 Townsend Harbor Road. Anyway, they paint this thing, and I understand, you know, the, I don't understand, actually, the technicality of all this. I'm not an engineer, that's not my area of expertise, but what I do understand is how this is going to impact my life, our life, that, you know, we moved there to, to have peace and quiet, and, you know, the animals are such a plus. Anyway, they paint it, it's going to be a gravel pit, and it's going to be noisy and dirty, and there's, there's no way, all they're talking about, all these things they're going to do, it's still going to be dusty and dirty. And the wildlife, there are beaver behind Dino's house in that area, that wetlands area there, there's, there's beaver in there. And I know that because unfortunately, they get squashed trying to go across, across the road to the other side of the swamp. There's turtles in there. Those truck drivers that are removing the dirt from this site are not going to be stopping for turtles or beavers. I mean, they're just going to get plastered all over the road. You upset 50,000 cubic yards of dirt, it's going to have an impact on our neighborhood. It's going to impact the dynamic of our neighborhood. I, I just feel that it is. It's very close to our septic system, which is down the bottom of our driveway. Our septic system is, is right there, and they've assured me that we're not going to touch your septic system, we're not going to go near it. I just think our septic system can be impacted by not, not necessarily having to go right up to it, but, you know, the, the whole dynamic is going to change in our neighborhood. 50,000 cubic yards, I mean, we've heard estimates of 1,500 to 2,500 truckloads of material being removed. And, you know, that rumbling and bouncing and, you know, the, the material being removed by God only knows what kind of equipment, it's going to negatively impact our neighborhood. And I'm, I'm speaking for, for all of us, because I've spoke with them, and they share with me the negative effect, removing that iconic landmark hill, and it is. People who don't know Lunenburg know that hill, and know the horses that used to be on that hill. You know, now you tell them it's going to become a gravel pit, and, oh, that's a shame, that's a shame. Yeah, well, try living next to whatever is coming, or, or, you know, hopefully not coming. And I, the Conservation Committee is coming Saturday to our house, to our property. They will be there, I don't know how many members are coming, but members are coming. They want to see firsthand what we've been talking about, how close everything is in, in real life as opposed to on paper. So, we would like to invite any of you, all of you, if you would like to come as well. I don't know if you've walked the property, our property, or the other properties, but you are welcome to join the Conservation Committee, and please come Saturday. And I think it'll, it'll give you a, a different perspective of what we're trying to, to relate to, the human aspect of this project. Okay? Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Hi, my name is Clifford Smith, 70 Townsend Harbor Road. I think that sticking with the water that we're talking about, and Mark mentioned it, but not, didn't stress it, up in front of his home, there's water, and it's above that hill. If you take a look at that, there's water on, behind my home, it's trenched down the street, there's, there's, I had problems with my saliva, I had to fix that. The water table there is very high, and out in front of Mark and Bonnie's home, there's, there's water, well, I, I would guess up until June or July when it dries out, but there's water there. Our driveway explodes in the middle from the runoff from that bankin' that runs alongside of our driveway, that abuts the land we're talking about. And there, there's, there's, there's water all around that place. Whether, when I look at that, or we want to see that, that's why we invited the commissioners up for this Saturday to take a peek at it. You can't see that, it's not shown, even the homes that are there, Bonnie's and Mark's, and our home, Pam and mine, that, it's not, it's not even on the, our driveway's not on the map. We seem to be excluded from that, as well as Dino being excluded from even being notified that what was taking place on the hill. So, I really would encourage you to come up and take a look and see what we're talking about insofar as the water. And the mention of the beavers, the, the first pond, there's two ponds on there, two, two bodies of water. Up until last year, there was a beaver, beaver lodge in the first one on Townsend Harbor Road, and that, now those beaver, once they clean out an area, if you're familiar with it or not, once they chew off all the little saplings, they move. And they, they, they need clean water, because what they're, they're in is they poisoned because of what they do to it. And so, they, they leave that, they went to another area, they're down behind his home, and they have, they have a beaver lodge there also. He has seen the beaver. I have not, because it's behind his property, I've never seen it, but I... But I did see when it was in the first, the first section of water, that, and again, that's not shown either. That's pretty convenient, but a lot of those spots of water are not on there. Please come up and take a look at it. We would welcome that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? No? Please.
In this revised submission, the, the abutting houses of the last two abutters to speak were added to, to the plans for reference. They're on the existing conditions plan. I think, I think they might get covered up on some of the later sheets with the, with one of the tables, but they're, they are shown on the plans now after hearing their, their concerns at previous hearings. With regard to water flowing off the site, if, I don't know if you have a copy of the stormwater report in front of you, but at the back, there are drainage area maps that show a significant reduction in the area of, of land that is running towards their, their parcel. So, if anything, this, this, the stormwater features being added to this property will mitigate and reduce any runoff that's impacting their driveways from this property.
I do have a question relative to the screening operation. You indicated that the erosion control or barrier would be a silt fence. How long is the, the screening operation intended to occur?
It would be on an as needed basis through the, as long as the top soil being removed.
So, period of time, you said, one to three years, you think?
They get spelled out in the earth removal application, that we have to do it like every eight to 10 days. So, we haul material out for eight to 10 days, then we have to screen, then we have to spread it, then we have to seed it. That was all part of the earth removal process.
But the operation itself, depending on, as you said, depending on the market, et cetera, and the, and the plans for phase two, will determine how long this process, earth removal process goes on, whether it be one to three years. You'd need to get a permit annually. One concern that I have is because of the proximity to the wetland, is there any kind of more permanent barrier that can be placed that would provide a greater level of protection versus hay bales and a, and a silt fence? I mean, we've all seen silt fences and hay bales along projects, and they, honestly, they don't last that long.
Well, I think the biggest thing is, I mean, we're not going to strip the whole site and screen up whatever 1,600 yards per acre, per foot figures out to, you know, I mean, we're not going to screen up 8,000 yards of loom. We're really going to have a small screen implant there, so we, we mine for, you know, whatever, two weeks. Once we're done mining, we sleep, you know, shape up the slope, we screen, we spread it there. So, we're really not going to have like a huge stockpile of screened loom. I mean, we're talking probably 100 yards at a time that we're going to screen as we go. And honestly, we don't even need to screen. I mean, we can spread existing loom, and we can york rake it, and we could just seed that. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be screened, per se. Whatever we screen, typically, we're going to either spread or truck offsite.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
I, I do just want to let people know, and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, our purview is not on the earth removal. That is the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. And a lot of the concerns that have been expressed tonight are relative to the operation itself, and that is out of the jurisdiction of the planning board. Our role is simply relative to stormwater as a stormwater permit. I just want everyone to be aware of that. And I appreciate the invitation on Saturday. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town, but I would love to see the site. And if you're amenable, I would like to see the site, so.
Excuse me. I'm all about transparency, too. As everybody wants to walk the site, I'm around. My, my site.
Okay. Hi. Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive. I think just sort of speaking as myself, one thing I wanted to say in terms of the overall project here, I still have a lot of thought going on with the earth removal permit, in specific to a comment just made by the engineer, that the abutting houses were added to the plans. Because when we had plans, the abutters that are here, their structures were not on the plans. And when you read the earth removal permitting bylaw, let's see, where are we? We're in Section C of something here. 7C. An adequate and sufficient plan prepared by a registered engineer, and one of the things is the locations of all structures within 200 feet of said limits. And so, I'm going back to our hearing where I don't think I had all the information I needed, and then hearing that information was added. I don't know how that impacts the fact that our permitting authority was already exercised with potentially information that we should have had. And so, there's, I think there's a lot going on here, and that's why I'm continuing to learn. So, my comment tonight in terms of how it relates to here is that having gone to conservation planning, watched the other planning, and having been at the Board of Selectmen hearing, I'm having a really hard time figuring out the fact that we're not being given an endpoint. And maybe there doesn't need to be one, but that's making it hard for all of us to know what data we need. And so, when you bring up MIPA and all the things that you know, and your wealth of knowledge is in that place, mine isn't, I was just reading it, and it says, you know, the review is based on the nature, size, location. And if half the project is underway and all of this alteration is occurring, and it didn't trigger things that should have or might need to be triggered if it was a total project, I feel like we're in a gray area, and it's making it really hard to understand the environmental impact. And we keep hearing that there's a, I mean, there's a plan or there's an endpoint. Well, why not just submit that plan and let us all know what's going to happen so we can work around that rather than work around all this uncertainty?
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Jean Proctor. I'm owner of this property. We do not have a plan. We do not have an ending point. We bought a piece of land. It's commercially zoned. We would love to have a crystal ball and know what, exactly what we're doing. And we understand that every year, we, we reapply for an earth removal permit. We do not know how, it's all dependent on Dan's work, where he needs the material. There's, we don't know, but we're doing everything that the town is requiring us to do. And this is what's so frustrating about this is, you know, this has been very stressful for us. We're extremely conscientious people. We've lived here. Dan's lived here his entire life. We live down the street. We're very, we're conservationists ourselves. We love, we, we have beavers behind our house. We're not doing anything to be detrimental. We are, we, we have kids that grew up here. I mean, we, we're very invested in this town. We're not trying to do anything wrong. We're not trying to do anything wrong. We've spent thousands of dollars on engineering. We've over-engineered the, the project, and we're just, we don't know what we're going to do with this. We bought it as an investment so that we can provide for our family. We'll have three kids in college in, in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate what she just said, Mark Resnickovich, 68 Townsend Harbor Road. But the human aspect of this thing keeps getting ignored, and that's why I feel I have to keep coming up here and reminding you that it's not all about dirt and technicality and water and all of that. There's wildlife, there's wetlands, there's us. Our property values are going to go down the drain with this thing next door. Who do we talk to about that? Who helps us out? Who hears our side of the story? And yes, your property value is going to drop $50,000. Thank you very much. We don't deserve that. What did we do to deserve that? We keep our property up. We meticulous, Cliff and Pam, our property, we invest in our property, we pay our taxes as exorbitant as they are, but that's, that's Lunenburg. That's Lunenburg, okay? We're willing to pay that. But, you know, to have a gravel pit next door, that's a totally different animal from, from what we've had, the peace, the tranquility, the quiet. And, and I just, you hear the technical aspect, and we all get lost in that. I just want to remind everybody, there's a human aspect to that, to this whole thing, and that's, that's us. And this, this thing is going to be detrimental to our neighborhood, to our lives. I mean, you can talk to my friends behind me, sleepless nights, stomach problems, all this has come up since this thing has started. You know, we don't deserve that. You know, my wife can't sleep, or Pam can't sleep. All, all that we hear in our head is, you know, what's going to go on next door? And it's, it's detrimental to us. And I just want to bring out that point, that, you know, if he was digging ditches someplace else, I don't care if I ever see this guy, or know him, or know his family, or anything. It's none of my business. But don't come to my yard, basically, and start digging up the dirt and causing noise and, and all the problems. There's going to be a rodent infestation from this thing. When you dig up that field where there's horses, there's rodents, and they are going to start to scatter, and they're probably going to scatter our way. So, you know, another thing to consider, something we have to look forward to, infestation of mice and rats coming into our yard. But these are, these are concerns, valid concerns. And I, I just felt I had to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dino Dantonio, yeah, Townsend Harbor. I'm all for stripping back the soil, and I get that. You know, he wants to use it on other sites, and it's an investment. I'm all for, you know, making things work. But, you know, you get down six, eight, 10 feet, all of a sudden, you hit ledge. What happens now? Now comes in the excavators with the, you know, what happens then? What happens? Oh, the excavator, the hammer drill won't handle it. We got to drill and blast. Now what happens? This stuff, I haven't heard anything about that stuff. Haven't heard anything about that.
We did bring it up at the last meeting.
I did.
That's earth removal. Unfortunately, that's earth removal.
Right, correct. And I, I clean the dirt all the time.
But this isn't an earth removal hearing. This is a stormwater hearing. The earth removal.
Right. Well, this is all part of it, and, you know, once you start, you're putting more water because you're going to keep the dust down, the basins are going to be, I mean, I work on construction sites all the time. That's what I do for a living. And big basins don't get cleaned out like they're supposed to be. The riprap ends up getting clogged, overflowed, dirt ends up back out in the road. It happens all the time. It happens all the time.
I was speaking specifically to your questions about the presence of ledge, the depth of ledge. All of that should be, it, it is or would be covered under earth removal, which is not, and I appreciate your concerns.
It's just, you know, I'm just, because I haven't been in any of the other meetings that I didn't know about, so.
They are all available on YouTube.
Oh, I found that out now, you know? But it's just another concern I had, you know? I, it just, it's the wetland thing that really, because I'm so close to that.
Well, my understanding is that the applicant has already done test holes over a large part of this lot, and so they dug.
They know how deep it is before they start hitting the ledge and stuff, yes.
So, they've got seven test holes shown. Each one of them is referenced at 15-foot depth, and their maximum cut, shown on the plans per the topo, is 17 feet.
17 feet. So, they'd end up, the max would be 17 feet on it, which is fine. I mean, but, you know, you hit ledge, you got to drill.
Again, that's not an issue for this storm.
Right, for this meeting, but, you know, but how does that, I just, there's a lot of concerns that I have, you know, going with the wetlands, the runoffs, all that stuff. It, I just, I don't know. I just have a lot of concerns before we move forward with it, that's all.
Sure.
And we appreciate those concerns.
We certainly do.
The subject of this hearing is specifically stormwater.
Yeah, for the wetlands. And, you know, I have a, that's my whole yard. So, that's a major issue for me.
So, the 19th, make sure you make sure, make.
Absolutely will be. I will.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing. I, I, Clifford Smith, 70 Townsend Harbor. I understand you said you were going to be away on Saturday. You couldn't make it. That walking the property, coming up, please is open to any time. You can come night and day. Well, you want to come at night. But please feel free to come up and take a look at what we're talking about up there. That's at any time. Before you go away, right after you come back, have a nice time. Appreciate everybody's time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
Open.
Thank you. All right. Any more public comment? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, your question about MIPA, in, in reading the regs again, it, it sort of confirmed what I originally had thought that I, you know, it's a judgment call by the secretary whether or not the MIPA process is required. It does list things that permit is a defined term. I don't know that I could make a clear call whether a temporary access is within that jurisdiction without looking at, at other things and reading further into it. So, I, I don't have a clear answer right now.
Okay.
But I don't know that a municipality can say this needs MIPA. It's a state-driven permit that's issued, that's required or not required by state agencies.
Well, at this point, due to the new information that's come up at this meeting, and the information specifically to the Chair of Conservation and the meeting coming up, I am inclined to continue this public hearing until after that. But that being said, we're still in public hearing, so.
The applicant would ask that the, the public hearing be, be continued to the next planning board hearing?
Okay. So, for the.
24.
February 24th? It's my birthday. I didn't send it here. Lucky you.
What a way to celebrate.
February 24th. I realize this doesn't work. I'm sorry.
So, what I hear, there's really two things you're looking for, an answer on MIPA. And are you going to identify?
No, no.
Oh, I just want to identify what we're, provide what information you're looking for specifically for that 24th, so we can make sure we have a clear-cut answer.
To this point, I don't think it's anything from you folks. I think it's entirely from other groups in town.
So, you're looking for Conservation Commission?
And DEP. I'm, I'm looking for review comments from DEP. Nothing's been posted.
Right, right.
When you said there was an error, did they not get mailed, or what, or did they just get it, or?
The package was mailed on, right, right before Christmas. The DEP's copy of the NOI was, was omitted. We found out late, and then it, it got back to them a few weeks ago. So, I've been, I've been trying to chase them down for a, a number of several weeks.
Okay. Because normally, when they receive it, they put the receipt date, and then they do their review comments, and I've been looking, and I haven't seen anything?
Well, yes and no. I've gone, I've, I've gone like three Conservation Commission meetings without a DEP number, so they're, they're short-staffed, so they, I'm not, no one's knocking DEP. They do a lot of work. But I understand what you're saying. We can't get, we won't be able to close the conservation process without the DEP number, and that's when we get the comment. So, that's fine. And then we can endeavor to get a firmer answer on MIPA.
I, I do like the idea of visiting the site, and I will take up the offers of the abutters. I'll also take you up, Dan, and maybe we can walk the field. And I, you know, I think that looking, doing a site visit, especially when you're looking at a project of this magnitude, makes sense. And I think when you can visually, okay, this is where the detention basin is going to go, these are where the catch basins are going to go, I would find that really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. It's fine.
I don't know how other members feel, but.
Yes, no.
Certainly would like to see this.
Makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
Was there anything else? I mean, did you find the responses to the peer review consultants? I guess the peer review consultant's response satisfactory? Any other questions?
They found your responses satisfactory.
Yeah, well, I guess I just want to make sure that you find them satisfactory, so we don't.
I don't have a problem with the review.
I don't have a problem with the review.
Notwithstanding your questions that overlap.
I would appreciate, you talked about specific standards in the stormwater handbook relative to infiltration basins, and I did a lot of research on the stormwater standards, and I found dry detention basins, and I found, you know, the deep-sunk catch basins, and I found, I haven't found the infiltration basin, so maybe if you could forward that to.
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be great.
Yep.
Because I'd like to review that. Because I'd like to review that. I printed everything else, but couldn't find that one, so...
Well, I mean, if you ever...
Oh, I know. Believe me, I know.
You're watching yourself asleep at night, reading the stormwater management handbook.
Yeah, volume one, volume two, volume three.
Well, that's right. Well, we can get you that. Yeah, no problem.
So my two concerns would be that there looks to be a 40 or 50-foot gap between the northerly and the southerly silt fence sedimentation control. I think it would be very simple to close that loop, too. Any concerns from neighbors about runoff?
Are you looking at this gap here?
Yes.
So that gap was left because it can certainly be extended as a visual delineation?
Just to close the loop.
Anything perpendicular to the contours wouldn't provide any soil erosion protection? Any runoff? So if, that would, that would, that would put the silt fence in line with the water, with the direction that the water is going. But we can certainly clo- close that off.
And then also, on the construction entrance, I had mentioned at our last meeting, I like the length of it, but there's no specified length. And the detail says minimum 20 feet? Length 20-foot minimum. See plan for location. I would like to just have a dimension shown on the plan.
Yes.
Because it looks like well over 100 feet in length. If that's not a problem, that would be great.
We can add that, yes.
Any other, any other immediate concerns? Okay, is there any additional public comment now that we've had some more discussion? Okay, the applicant has requested to continue, uh, the date of February 24th?
I had a couple of questions that, and I don't know, I mean, this is just the stormwater part of things, but they've made some references to the watershed area. And I'm just trying to think ahead so that the applicant doesn't end up stuck with needing more meeting time and so on. And we don't have a clear understanding of how this all would shake out, but theoretically, there's a single-family house on the parcel now.
Correct.
So if the house remains, it's a non-conforming use.
That's correct.
How would they go through that A and R process? They, would they need the minimum lot size from the next closest area?
They would need the minimum lot size from the commercial district.
But a single-family home isn't permitted in it?
Correct, but the, the structure and the use remain. So that structure is a home. It's a single-family home, has been since it was constructed. So unless it's abandoned for a period of two years.
Yep.
It retains that ability to be used as a single-family home legally. So the lot is currently conforming, because it's in excess of the required lot size. If you were to divide the parcel, you need to have adequate lot size in frontage for the zone that it's located in. And the house retains its pre-existing non-conforming use.
So essentially, a one-acre lot?
Correct. Yes.
Whether it's a commercial or...
Or otherwise, yeah.
So theoretically, if they do retain the house, they would subdivide off a one-acre lot, and down the road, somebody could demo the house and change the use, whatever they want to do.
Well, they wouldn't, I mean, they're not changing, well, they're changing the use because they're putting, but someone could retain the house and use it as a commercial. Someone could have purchased the property, chose to not do earth removal, and use the house as a commercial use, because it is in a commercial zone.
Okay.
If and when we get to Phase Two, that A and R process has to occur, if you're proposing commercial development.
Someone could choose to include the house as part of the commercial development.
Okay, would, could you have a single family?
Someone could raise the house.
Okay, can you have a single-family residence and a commercial entity?
I'd have to look at the zoning. I think that mixed use is allowed in the commercial district, and it would have to, I'm almost positive it is. But I mean, that's all questions that, that...
That was Stone Farm's problem. They were in commercial.
But they're not in commercial.
They're in limited business.
They were.
They were.
But that was before we changed the use table.
Right, but they...
I believe that as part of the update to the use table, the board felt that mixed use was appropriate in commercial zones.
What was the specific question? Can they construct a commercial?
No, my question is, is can they, well, Tanner had a question, and then I, so trying to understand the A and R process, and what happens with that house. If, can it remain a single-family home on a commercial lot? Does it need to be divided and have the lot area, the one-acre lot area?
Yeah. So according to the table, mixed use is allowed in the commercial district.
What page is it?
And mixed use is a combination of commercial and residential uses when a single building or lot, in the case of a use that requires a special permit, a zoning board of appeals decision must be rendered on the use prior to filing for a planning board site plan approval. So in theory, someone could retain the house as a single-family home and use the property as mixed use.
As long as it's under the same ownership.
We don't, we don't do, ownership is not controlled by the town. So they could condoise it, where they create some sort of legal document that meets out ownership and responsibilities amongst the two parties. I mean, in this situation, I would envision if someone were going to live in the house, they would be the owner of whatever business happened to be on the site, but that's not necessarily required.
I just wanted to try to avoid the situation where everything's laid out, and then down the road, you go to, go through the A and R process.
Sure. And I mean, they could, they could come in July and do an A and R, pull the house lot off, and rehab and sell the house. That wouldn't be...
You're going to remind us this is stormwater for Phase One?
Well, I don't think I need to. But I just wanted to assure the board that we actually, we've thought that through. There's, there's multiple different avenues that would go. The mixed use, while it's an option, is probably the least likely one. If we wanted to maintain that as a residential use, we would likely come in with an A and R plan. The way that's graded is not an accident. There's an acre land that goes with the house there. The trees are maintained, the driveways are maintained. It can be done in a zone in a dimensionally compliant manner. And the remaining lot would be dimensionally compliant as a commercial lot. So we've sort of, we've thought through that. I don't, we don't feel like, at this point, we're putting the cart before the horse relative to that, but I do appreciate the concern.
So do we have any more concerns about Phase One?
The only thing I picked up on in the watershed stuff is there's some language in there about how much can be disturbed and so on. And when you said that Zone Two and Zone Three are collinear, they share the exact same space, there's no distinction?
Roughly. I left a faith figure at home that I was going to hand out. It's the mass DEP line and the town zone, Zone Three line. On the plans is, it is very close. And at, at the scale of a GIS line, I would say it's exactly the same on our parcel.
Okay. Have you reviewed the watershed regs, calculations? There were a couple of these. I can, I'll spell them out. There's a clause in here that says, "Natural vegetation, no more than 30% of existing natural vegetation on any lot may be disturbed in a residential district, nor more than 50% existing natural vegetation on any lot may be disturbed in an underlying non-residential district." So essentially, you've got 50% that you need to leave undisturbed. And I guess my question would be, under the current configuration it complies, I don't know how that affects the future use. In other words, you don't disturb 50% right now, but the minute you subdivide off the other lot, you've disturbed more than 50%. So...
I would have to research that, that answer.
When you say haven't disturbed more than 50%, are we sure of that?
I don't know. I don't know.
It does look like it's more than 50.
It looks to me more than 50%.
You're talking about Section 4.9?
Yeah, it's 4.9. The limitations upon uses, which is letter E, number six.
Water supply protection district, isn't that, isn't that our Zone Two?
Yes, and I think that...
So it makes sense that the state's Zone Two, which is public water supply protection, coincides with our Zone Three, which is watershed protection to our public drinking water.
Yeah.
They should be the same, I would think.
They're very, very close, and I would have to research that, that...
And there is an exemption, too, for single-family dwellings. So a single-family dwelling would be quote-unquote exempt from that provision. So...
And it would be 50% of the, basically, the front third of the site.
Exactly. It wouldn't apply to anything.
It wouldn't be the entire site, yes.
Can you just point out where that zone line is?
Yes, I can.
That zone, zone line.
And which portion is within the zone?
This portion.
Okay.
So that's less than 50.
I don't know. That definitely needs to be looked at.
Yep, that'll be documented.
Excellent. Thank you.
And where this is not, is this a change of use, or is this not a change of use? Because...
No, I don't believe that this is a change of use.
But they do have a special permit. And wouldn't that trigger site plan review?
A special permit for...
Earth removal.
It's not a special permit per the way it reads. And it's not a zoning special permit. It's a general bylaw permit.
Okay. We moved our stormwater from zoning into general so that it was townwide.
He's asking about earth removal.
Earth removal.
But the earth removal doesn't even read as special permit.
Well, the stormwater...
The coordinator does, but it's not, it's not technically a special permit, because it's not governed under 40A.
Okay.
It's governed under the general bylaws. So it says special permit, but it's not in the legal aspect of special permit. And the same thing with earth removal. It's just an earth removal permit granted by the general bylaw, not special permit as 40A.
But, I've just been taken to task personally by the planning board prior to sitting here over a piece of property that I bought, and it was a change of use. And I had to come in front of the board and go through that process. So I'm just wondering why, in this particular situation, that doesn't apply.
I would question why change of use doesn't, doesn't... I would question why change of use doesn't apply either. You're starting a commercial enterprise of earth removal on a residential site.
But it's a commercial zone.
But the single-family house is still there, again, you know. I'm just trying to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Now you've got to think about all our trailer parks that are also commercial.
In regards to the, the storm, the zone protection area, it talks about providing temporary or permanent stabilization of disturbed areas at the earliest opportunity, limit exposure to less than 60 days. The majority of that, I think, complies with that, except for the stockpile. Is there a way to shift that stockpile?
Yes.
Because I think that has to come outside of your zone.
I can cer- certainly shift that north and east.
Yeah, I think that area and the, potentially even the screening plant, although I don't know if there's any stabilization that needs to occur around that. I know you have a hail bill salutation fence, looks like, along it.
Relatively schematic, that, that could be moved.
Yeah, because based on this reading, if you look at number seven of the storm, of the watershed protection area, I think Tanner raises some good points.
Well, I think as Mr. Proctor said, they would remove material for a couple of weeks and then stabilize it. So the 60 days really shouldn't be an issue.
Except for the stockpile. Depends on how long the stockpile's there.
And there's language in the erosion control notes about if something is sitting for a certain amount of time, it needs to be permanently stabilized.
That's in our stormwater.
Yes. And that, and it's in my erosion control notes on Sheet 3-1 also. So that is covered.
That's okay. All right. Anything further? They asked, continue? Probably going to let them, because we want that same thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, continue to February 24th at 6:30, 5? Thank you very much.
You have a motion of vote?
Uh, so, second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
They signed your plan, John. They already signed your plan. Yeah. Kim took it. Kim Cole has it. You're welcome to stay. I know, it's exciting stuff here. Thank you. All right. Oh, wow. Our next agenda item is earth removal bylaw.
Timing is everything.
Surprise!
All right, so Draft 3, January 29?
Hopefully, the last draft before public comments.
Do we have a version yet that shows the existing and the proposed changes? So this is Earth Removal Rules and Regulations, Draft 4, Draft 3?
Because this is Draft 3 of the bylaw only.
Okay, bylaw and rules and regulations. Do we have a copy of the bylaw as it exists today with the red lines, with the red text as revised by this revision?
It would just be one giant cross-out.
That's not going to work for me, because...
But that's what it is. The existing bylaw isn't, isn't reflected in, in this.
We're not changing the existing.
Correct. What I'm working on right now is a PowerPoint presentation that compares side-by-side the requirements of both.
Well, then how come the last couple times I've asked for that, you've said okay?
My understanding is you were asking for the PowerPoint showing the differences between the two, or some, a document that showed the differences.
I wanted a document that shows the earth removal currently as it exists, with the Board of Selectmen as the permit granting authority, and, and all the verbiage, and then what we've added to and what we've removed. Because there was a lot of pushback at last town meeting, and I don't want to be the jerks who just come back the next meeting and say, here, here it is again.
But that was...
Fill-in removal. I understand that, but...
No, no, no. The, that's how it was presented at the last town meeting. It showed the existing bylaw, and it showed it as crossed out, and then the new verbiage.
Are you sure?
I'm absolutely positive. So I think more impactful is going to be a compare and contrast, side-by-side, showing each version of it. And again, when it goes in the warrant, it will have the existing bylaw in there and crossed out. But the existing bylaw is two-thirds of the page, or... crossed out, but the existing bylaw is two-thirds of the page, or a page and two-thirds, something like that.
It's not very big.
It's not very big, no.
Well, and I think we can stick with the key talking points.
Yeah, and I think that's-
You know, how many yards triggers it, and-
Correct.
Well, and I think, given this situation, I, I think the abutters is an important piece. Is there a requirement in the existing one to notify abutters?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So I'd like to, I'd like to understand that.
And we can, I can look right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he may have missed the notification because that property changed.
I would say, he also has become the owner within the last calendar year, so he, his, his ownership may not have-
Been reflected on the assessors, it may not have been recorded.
Correct.
And they only have to do the notice for the owner.
So he may have gotten a letter from the town to the previous owner and said-
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I just got my host back, and indeed, within, within a couple of weeks, the assessors were updated. So tax, tax are the most up-to-date, current thing that you'll ever find in any municipality, because they want their money.
Well, we get our money one way or the other.
Pretty much, but-
I, I just think it's important that we highlight all of the changes. So I don't know what that requirement is, but since it was brought up as a concern tonight, I think, just looking at that.
It does not say anything that I see about notice to abutters.
See, I think that's a plus for us. I mean, to me, if somebody was going to do an earth removal operation next to me, I'd want to know. And have the opportunity to attend.
So, yeah, and I mean, I think that- abutter notification is something that, in general, we should be striving to include.
Completely agree.
Then that-
I say that, and I have to look and make sure I include it.
Then that begs the question, is it 100 or 300?
This says 300.
I, I-
Oh, you added it in the definition, but did you require it in the-
I would always strive to have the two, have everything be as standardized as possible. So where the majority of our notification requirements are 300, I would just continue that throughout, because then there is, is this a 300, is it 100, is it 500? It just, it's 300. That's, that's it.
Yeah, you did. Notice of all of the hearings shall be given to all owners of real estate. You did include it.
Currently, it's nailed to owners of abutting property.
Yeah, so it is included.
So the bylaw you have includes the change, the increase to the 1,500 cubic yards, the alteration under the exemptions to any activity which shall be governed by MGL 143 to get over our swimming pools and, and other issues, and the driveway permit issued by the town of Lunenburg-
Yeah.
-at the bottom. And then, when we get into the regulations, 4.1.8 is the soil testing which we talked about, and, I mean, some of it was easy, the minimum, and the licensed soil evaluator. I added a sentence because we talked about what happens when you get to the base of your original test pits that are 15 feet deep and you're going 30 feet. So I add language saying the new soil testing may be required by the planning board prior to continuation. And that way, on a case-by-case basis, the board can look at that, and I imagine in most cases, you're going to say, "Yes, we want to see new soil testing," but it gives you some, some leeway in there.
So 4.1.8, is this to say that if somebody came with a 20-acre site, they wanted to clear that we would only require four?
No, a minimum of four locations. Additional soil testing locations shall be required at a one-to-one ratio for each acre included in the removal area over five acres. So for every acre, you're doing an additional test pit.
So for five acres, you're doing four, and then every additional one, you're doing four more?
Nope, for every additional one, you're doing one more.
One more. Okay.
That was my understanding of what the, the board had decided was reasonable.
That sounds reasonable, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And you'll notice 4.1.13 was not in there before. This was something that came up in discussions with the Board of Health regarding the property we were just discussing. When they went for earth removal, there was a question about a septic system that was not located and was within, I don't know, 30 or 40 feet of the property line, and within less than 100 feet of where they were doing earth removal, and there was some concern about, would the earth removal have an impact on the septic system, and how come it doesn't show? And so in discussing with the Board of Health, they've requested that we have septic systems within 100 feet of proposed earth removal boundaries be located. Not necessarily property boundaries, but with, in the area that they're proposing to remove earth, just so that there can be knowledge that it's happening and that there's a septic system there.
Make sure it doesn't impact the fill or whatever.
The board can, yeah, can evaluate whether or not there's a need for additional engineering or review that the septic system won't be impacted.
That seems kind of silly to me, because I have a good understanding of locations of soil absorption systems, and then they're required to be 20 feet off the property line, and the breakout, three to one, at 100 feet, you'd need to be 33 feet deeper than the bottom of the leaching trenches, which, how, how often do people cut more than 33 feet?
But there are many times where variances are granted to go less than 20 feet, and for the fill to extend over, for, for fill easements. There are many fill easements in Lunenburg if it's a tight lot. So I think that's the concern.
And then, to pick up on Matt's point, no excavation shall be permitted to occur within 50 feet of any lot line.
Correct.
So you've got a 50-foot buffer.
You also have the ability to waive that if you felt that it was appropriate?
But if you have knowledge of a septic system in the area, you wouldn't-
But how are you going to have knowledge of-
But you're not going to have knowledge unless they put it on the plan. All this requires it be put on the plan.
No, I'm saying, go ahead and put it on the plan, but in terms of, you know, the setback and so on.
And, I mean, that, that information is easily obtainable through the Board of Health.
Really?
Yeah. They have the records.
I do this all the time at work, and it's, it's often very difficult to find the location of the existing septic system if it hasn't been done in the last 10 years.
Not here. I can guarantee you that.
I was going to say, especially here, but-
No, absolutely, no, no, no.
Okay. That, and that as well as wells. Wells and-
Yeah, I was wondering about well locations.
Yeah, do you want to include that in there?
I'd like to know if there are wells within 100 feet.
I'm just going to call it private wells.
Yeah.
Drinking wells or any wells?
I'm sorry?
Are you open to public comment?
Is it going to be public, or is it going to be the-
public comment.
Is this about the, the permit hearing you had at Peninsula Drive?
Nothing to do with that.
Okay, please, please come on.
Nothing to do with that.
Drinking wells or any well?
Drinking wells. I'm not necessarily as concerned about agricultural wells.
That's why I want to be as clear as possible, because I don't want them chasing down wells that are unnecessary.
What would you like to comment on?
Okay, Katie Adams commenting as a earth removal permitting authority. Having gotten involved in this more and more over time, you know, in the past two years, Gary Rhodes helped a lot with educating us. What I'm highly concerned about is we're working on the details here with the planning board on how to make the permitting authority better for the selectmen. If we can't get the permitting authority moved to the planning board, all the work you're doing has no true purpose, and I'm stuck with a permitting authority without these adaptations and without better understanding. And so all these things that are being done now technically should be being done by us so we can provide better outcomes for that of which we are currently responsible for.
I completely agree, and you guys are welcome to do it.
So, well, that's fine, or we'll just go by what we have. But that being said, I think when this goes to town meeting, because we have already done it once and failed once, I don't think we should do it again and fail again, is that the most important thing is to move the permitting authority. That would help everything that's happening right now, because it really doesn't go with, with what we typically work on, and all these questions, and all the engineer review. It really coincides with the stormwater, the earth removal permitting. So more important than changing it, I think, is getting it to the right location. And that being said, I think I'd like to see it go to town meeting as, one, move the authority by adopting bylaws that 100% mimic the ones we have, so there's no barrier other than saying, can we give the permitting authority away? So step one, can we give the permitting authority away, and you submit bylaws that are identical to ours to be yours? Second warrant article, adaptations to the, you know, plan, something like that. Because I just feel like the most important thing is to move the permitting authority. And if we bring any barrier that says, "Oh, we don't like the change of the amount of this," or "We don't like the setback of that," and that prohibits it from passing, then we're going to be keeping it and eventually adapting it, and people are going to have to do the runaround to get permits in multiple places. I think the best thing we can provide is moving the authority. And I, I wish we could do that, or maybe we can do that as a separate item.
I, I thought that came up at our last meeting.
It did.
It did, and you were going to check with town council?
It's on my list of things to check with him.
Okay, because I completely concur with Ms. Adams' statement.
I do as well. I do see a snafu there, as if, if the permitting granting authority is accepted at town meeting and the regulations are, and the new bylaw is not, then that leaves us, who are sticklers for the rules, enforcing a 10 cubic yard. Yeah.
Yeah.
That would-
Well, and you know what? Next year, it'll change.
Well, I think, I think that is forgone. It should have been being enforced.
Well, either way, under either circumstance, it's the building commissioner that-
It's, yeah, it's the zoning officer.
Regardless, I mean, that's an open door position, basically revolving. I mean, we had, we had a temporary quit and then come back, and now he's gone again.
Well, now we have a permanent, right?
Well, we-
We do.
All right. Is he, is he a, I'm not even going to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Not even going to ask. All right. All right, so what else?
That's it. That was, that was the changes that we had talked about. So what my hope is tonight is that what was changed is satisfactory to the members of the board, and then we can distribute this to the board of selectmen.
The two current holders.
I have sent, I've sent both holders copies of this stuff as it exists. I can send them a final copy. Marissa pointed out that there is an excavating company that had some significant concerns at town meeting. I would send that gentleman a copy and invite him to our meeting to discuss it when we do it in public. I think the first meeting in March is the time to do that, to give us that, four weeks or so, to get word out, to visit the board of selectmen. And we can send this to Conservation, Board of Health, and say, "Here's the proposal, please give us any comments by this date," and advertise the, you know, the dog and pony show here in early March.
I think that's a great idea.
And that would give us enough time that we could put the bylaw in, and if there were some minor alterations, or there were alterations the board wanted to make potentially, they could still be printed in the warrant prior to town meeting, and they wouldn't need to be floor amendments.
So did, did we agree that, that wells should be added to the, as well as-
Private drinking wells.
So that would be the, that last thing.
Yeah.
And that would just be-
I would just include it in that statement.
Septic systems and private drinking wells.
And I'm assuming that zone 2 and zone 3 would appear on the map automatically? Or do they need to be depicted?
Uh-
Because it doesn't talk about that here.
Hmm.
I think we want to add that.
On-
Uh, property boundaries.
I'm not sure which map we would rather follow. It's a little confusing to me why DEP has-
A different one than the town does.
You know what I mean?
They classify it differently. I would use our zones 1, 2, and 3.
But aren't our zones approved by DEP? Because they oversee the wells.
Yes, yes.
That's what's so confusing about this.
Okay, so the fact that it's zone 2, zone 3, our zone 3 is included in what DEP classifies as a zone 2, and that's just my understanding. DEP is a global, where we have micro. So our zone 1 is wellhead, our zone 2 is aquifer, and our zone 3 is runoff.
Okay.
I believe.
Yeah, so I'm going to include that.
The only other question I have is, what about floodplain? Do they have to-
Floodplain's on here.
It is?
Yeah, 4.1.5, top of the second page. All easements points of ingress equal septic systems. And that's on the actual property.
Do we care about adjacent floodplanes, or just floodplanes on the property?
Just, I mean, you can't control anything on the adjacent properties. And, and really, the floodplain issue is, if you do work within the floodplain, you're required to file a special permit and provide compensatory storage if you're filling to a point where you're-
Reducing.
Reducing the, the storage. If you're excavating down FEMA's like, "Yay, more compensatory storage!"
Yeah, yeah.
And then also, there's also the, the fact that our FEMA floodzone has not been updated since '82 or '84.
Yeah, a very, very long-
Uh, it's coming.
I'm sure it is, yeah.
At some point.
No, no, in, in the, in the foreseeable future.
And then just, just FYI, it raised the flood elevation up to two feet, sometimes more, and just in Concord.
Really?
Did they do an actual flood study in Concord?
I believe they did, because that was a-
I don't think they would be subject to a flood study.
That was a prehistoric lake.
Mm-hmm.
There's so many, yeah, the soils-
That could potentially, I mean, with all the water bodies here, that could really-
I don't, we, I don't think we would be subject to that.
Let's hope that you're right.
So I'm going to add the watershed protection districts into 4.1.5, because we're concerned about them on the property, because that's the only thing that they would have jurisdiction over.
Yeah.
And then 6.5, trees or shrubs may be planted in order to provide screening, natural beauty, and reduce erosion. I feel like we should have a better standard, maybe we can-
Maybe required?
I would like to require.
From the solar, and like, have a standard that says so many trees and this spacing or something along those lines. Something that's pretty black and white.
Okay. Restoration standards.
Yeah, I definitely think-
I guess my, my concern about that, or my thought about that, is there may be places where it's not necessary.
But we can waive any requirement, right?
Correct. You could also, because it will, well, it's not a special permit. I, I'm just thinking, the project that we just reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
The majority of that site is going to be grass, and that's a reasonable restoration standard. And that's going to handle the erosion in the short term, which will eventually turn into pavement in the long term.
Well, my argument would be that, yes, grass is reasonable if it's a residential use, but during an earth removal operation, I would want to have more adequate screening for dust protection and for, and for visible, visibility issues. So from an abutter standpoint, I would like to see some trees. I mean, one of the people who talked tonight talked about the fact that they're sparse trees, and that that's going to be their view for some period of time.
Mm-hmm.
And dust is a huge concern, especially when you abut a residential area.
This is restoration standards, though. This is not during-
Oh, okay. Okay, this is, okay, that's restoration.
This is at the end.
What is there for-
You've done your earth removal.
Yeah, what is there for abutting, for screening of abutting properties during the process? Is there anything?
There is nothing.
Well, so then I'm wondering, should we move that up under operation standards?
Because we're just saying existing natural vegetation. I just think we will-
You're also requiring them to be 50 feet off the property line.
Yeah, but if the property line is just a field-
Sure, yeah, I, I understand.
We're concerned about screening solar farms, but we're not concerned about screening an earth removal operation? That doesn't mean, make sense to me.
I guess the flip side of that coin is, it's a temporary use, so you're making the applicant install a permanent structure.
That was gonna be my point, is depending on the nature of the earth removal. Now, at Keating, you're dealing with a different situation than even this one. And I understand three years can.
I was just gonna say, three years can be a lifetime, if you're looking at it.
Three, yes, three years can feel like a lifetime. And.
What if it goes five years? What if it goes 10 years?
Sure, but in this instance, there's going to be something else there, so screening from the future use.
There may be something else there, just to be clear. There's no endpoint on this permit.
No, but let's all be realistic. It's a commercial piece of property on a highly traveled road. There will be something there at some point in the future. When that is, I'm not gonna speculate on it. So screening the neighbors at the property line in that instance actually pays benefits going forward into the future.
Right.
Because then, okay, well, we've grown used to this row of arborvitae's or this pile of trees, or whatever it is, and you stick a commercial use in there, and, oh, look, we already have a buffer, and it, so, yes, I get that. Hmm. The, and sort of the flip side to that is, and I think we've talked about this, and I think Tanner's probably made the most reasonable comments, because it's what he does, when you plant screening stuff, you're planting this, and you're planting it this far apart. So by the time, even five years, you're only starting to get the benefit of screening from something that was planted that has grown. So I'm not saying we can't require it, I'm just, I'm trying, sort of talking through the process of what's the efficacy of it? If someone's planting, and I guess if you plant, you require a series of evergreens, there's more benefit, because you can require them six feet tall, you know, 20-foot space, but you're still.
I just bring it up, because a lot of the comments that we.
Yeah, no, I.
Were about the aesthetics, you know, how you, the property looks from the road, how the property looks from these people's homes. And I don't think it would be the position of the board to make every operation screen all four corners of their lots, especially if there's native material there. I mean, I would make the assumption that just about anybody would err on the side of leaving what's there versus cutting trees to plant trees.
Right.
You know.
You never know.
In some applications, I think it would go a long way to say, we're gonna have a six-foot row of arborvitae's there, and.
So let me do this.
View.
First, is there anything in the bylaw that, I mean, really, all of the changes are on the single page, the third page, with the exemptions and the increase in the cubic yardage?
So we can change the rules and regulations with the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Advertised and noticed. Or advertised, because you can't really notice abutters to regulations.
And just to back up, I mentioned it before, Hubbardston has five active earth removals, and they have a very extensive earth removal bylaw. Have you taken a look at that?
I'm sure I did look at it.
They've got some really extensive restoration standards as well. Anyways, I'm sorry.
So the bylaws, January 29.
Is the draft rate.
Okay. So under applicability, C1, the operation shall not encroach closer than 10 feet to a property line. And then in the rules and regs, it's.
Oh, it says 50, yeah. So we should change that to 50 in the bylaw? Or do you want to change it to 10 in the?
I would say 50 in the bylaw would make more sense.
How's everybody feel about that?
Yeah.
50?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, under number 2, we'd have to.
Yeah, just change that.
As well. And then a one-to-one slope shall exist between the operation and.
No greater.
No.
Can't be an inverse slope.
Yeah, but that's a really steep slope.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, it's 45 degrees.
Yeah, we rip out stuff like that.
Um, I don't know that that necessarily makes the most sense. I guess it depends on the extent of the removal, but if you have a 15-foot slope, that's one-to-one, that's pretty difficult to stabilize.
Most of these fine materials and well-sorted gravels aren't gonna hold the one-to-one.
So we're gonna call it a two-to-one?
At least, I would say.
What is it now? Do we have any requirement now for slope?
I don't believe that there is anything in the bylaw that speaks to slope.
You guys are more familiar with this as engineers. What is a reasonable slope?
Three-to-one is typically acceptable with loam and seed. And when you get to two-to-one or less, then you'd want to have a little bit more, like two-to-one typically would put soil mat, and then one-to-one typically would rip out.
Yeah.
So three-to-one?
What's title 5?
Three-to-one.
Three-to-one.
Breakout. And then, yeah, there's side slopes.
So why are we going one-to-one? Why don't we go back to three-to-one?
You wanna make it three-to-one?
Yep.
Okay.
So the definition of slope is okay. And where are we changing it to three-to-one?
Uh, in.
Oh, number 2, C2.
C2.
And then our restoration standards say two-to-one, so we have to change that.
We'll change that to three-to-one.
Restoration was in the rules?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So that changes three-to-one.
We still want to print the exemption for earth removal in conjunction with a driveway, given the fact that we changed the trigger to 1,500 yards? So essentially, if we remove the exemption, they can still construct a driveway, as long as they don't move more than 1,500 yards, right?
If they have a quarter-mile-long driveway.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I've lived in places where I've had that long of a driveway.
And there's a lot of them around here.
But in that case, wouldn't you want to review? I don't know.
I, I'm, honestly, the issue at town meeting had to do with Phil, as opposed to removal of the driveway permit.
No.
Because the gentleman lived on a heavily sloped, or had a heavily sloped lot, that he was going to need to bring Phil in to meet the 12% requirement of the driveway grade.
Yeah.
I think a driveway should be exempt, it goes through the driveway permit process.
Okay. Well, and if they're working around wetlands and everything.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna get picked by conservation.
So what, we actually have driveway permits?
Yes.
Yeah, issued by the TBW.
Nope.
No, zoning officer, the building department now.
Oh, okay.
Used to be DPW.
I was gonna say, I don't remember dealing with that, but it's not us to deal with.
No, it's a, it's just a review of the plan to ensure that it meets compliance with the bylaw, and that site distances are adequate per the police department, and access is adequate per the fire department.
We talked about this last time on the general limitations. I just think they are subjective, but I don't know how you change it not to be subjective.
And, I mean, we can.
At 40-7.
We can make them flat-out objective, it just, it takes away some of the wiggle room for the board, as far as the bylaw goes.
Yeah. I just, I mean, even just looking, will endanger the public safety, public health, or constitute a nuisance? I mean, with a nuisance, to me, may not be a nuisance to somebody.
And again, it's similar to special permit standards, which are also subjective.
Yeah, subjective, yeah.
And if you can support your claims of nuisance with information provided by the applicant or abutters, you can usually make something that's defensible.
Can we reference our existing nuisance and noise bylaw, I mean, regulations? I mean, because we're not gonna require anybody be less than our general regulations on noise and nuisance, right? I mean, we have general bylaws on noise.
We don't have a noise general bylaw.
Oh, that's right, yeah, no, yeah. Nuisance we do, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, that would be just defined by.
All right, well, earmark it, because that's still on their radar, is the noise thing. So whatever we put in here is gonna have to coordinate with any new induction of regulations.
Thomas Tanner could use his leaf blowers.
Well, but we would stimulate the local economy if we didn't use leaf blowers, because we'd have to hire more people to rake.
Yes.
Good luck funding that.
Who wants to rake? Everyone has to manage.
I just mow my leaves, so.
So you said. It's composting.
As far as the notice, I'm just wondering, conservation requires a certificate of mail. I would like to require a certificate of mail.
Oh, if we.
Well, we do the mailings.
Oh, we do the mailings?
Yes, they give us the list, and we send the notice out.
That's unlike anybody else. Zoning, you have to do it? No, zoning does it.
Yeah, we, and.
But conservation doesn't.
Correct.
No, I know they don't, I've done many filings.
Yeah, but that's why we do it that way, so we know that things get sent. Because if, I mean, certificate of mail is less expensive, but usually the gold standard is certified mail, which is like eight bucks a letter now.
Oh, no, no, certificate of mail is.
Certificate is cheaper.
Right.
Certified mail is like eight bucks a letter.
Yeah, it's eight bucks a letter. That's why conservation adopted the certificate of mail.
Yeah.
The.
They pay us, they give us self, they give us stamped envelopes.
Oh, they do?
And we stuff them and apply the labels.
Okay, so the cost will be billed to the applicant, okay. $250 permit fee, how did you arrive at that? What is the permit fee now?
Probably like $50. It's $100.
The reason I ask is, when we do a reviewing engineer, so say we get an earth removal permit, and we have Graves review it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we pay for that? How does that?
The applicant pays for that.
The applicant pays for that?
Yes, they give us $2,000 when they file, and it goes into a tri-party account. And we send it off to Graves, Graves does their review, sends us an invoice, we send it to the applicant, they sign off that they've received it, and that they tacitly agree that it's reasonable.
So that will be applicable here?
Correct.
Under, where, did we talk about that, just to, I can't understand?
For in the regulations.
It is in the regulations.
Oh, it's in the regulations, not in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And it falls under 53J.
Okay, okay.
So where we don't have in-house staff that is qualified for that type of work, we can, so we could, we could charge an applicant the fee that counsel would charge us to review a master deed that we were requiring them to do, because we don't have counsel. But that's kind of, we don't generally do that. But if we, if there were a specialized type of counsel or review, the one that always sticks out in my mind is, I worked in a community that someone wanted to put a cell tower in, and we needed to hire a radio frequency engineer to certify that what they were saying was appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
We had to bring this gentleman in from Vermont, house him overnight, and the applicant had to pay for all of that, because he was the only one in New England who was qualified to perform the review.
Were you here when they wanted to put cell towers on the water tower next to Highfield Village's proposal?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're up there, aren't they?
Yeah, but I mean, were you here for that permit?
I wasn't here for the original, I was here for when they did a modification.
Restoration.
That question, that RF frequency specifically came up.
Under the continuation of existing soil removal operations, does that fall in line under, with the existing permitting process? Because it says, basically, they can continue the use in accordance with the terms of such permit, which shall hereafter be enforceable by us. But then it talks about, they may continue to operate without being required to apply for a permit for a period of three years from the effective date of this article. So it's just a little bit confusing. And I, I don't know what would be an existing earth removal operation that was not required to obtain a permit under the prior bylaw.
Yeah, I guess there isn't any.
No, there's only two totals.
Well, and we're going up.
Huge.
Exponentially.
15 times.
So, I mean, we can take that out.
Okay.
Because you're right, that's not anything that's going to apply.
And then the only other thought along those lines is, I know, did we settle on a three-year permit?
I thought we settled on three years with two-year renewals.
So the initial is three years.
The initial permit is three years, and the renewals are for two years.
I mean.
So actually, now we have three earth removal permits.
Why?
The public hearing we just had.
No.
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 They're the second permit holder, right?
We have, we have probably 10, but we have two individual, or two parties that hold.
All 10?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's not one of them.
Yeah, that is. He has a permit.
He has a permit.
Mm-hmm. Powells don't?
No.
No.
Oh, that's what confuses me.
They turned in their permit.
Okay, so it's Keating's and Proctor's?
Yeah, they had finished whatever removals they had been doing.
Okay.
I guess the only comment I have along those lines is, I'm wondering if this should become an annual thing.
Which it is now. It is now under the selectmen.
It is now, yeah, and I'm wondering if we should stick with that, because, I mean, historically, I don't think earth removal's really been problematic, but that would assist in enforcement as well.
Well, and.
If you had a public hearing every year, then the abutters could come in and say, look at, they haven't been doing this, they haven't been doing that, when the zoning enforcement officer or the building officer may or may not be checking in as regular as a resident.
I think having an annual renewal process makes sense, because it requires the zoning officer to go out and to look at the operation. And I think that's how a lot of these permits were, ended up. We were just routinely approving them and renewing them, and it was when Mr. Rhodes got involved as the building commissioner and started going to see them and said, you're not doing earth removal here, we need to close this permit. I think, I think, and then if there were issues, and there happened to be one, they were identified.
Well, it says, in no case shall a permit be issued initially for a period longer than three years. Permit may be renewed for up to two years or lesser time as determined by the PGA, after evidence is presented. So.
Do you want to change the three to two and make the renewals one? Or do you guys just want one right off the bat?
Well, in reading it, it says.
No longer.
In no case can a permit be issued for a period longer than three years. It doesn't say you have to issue it for three years.
I like the idea of an annual renewal.
So right off the bat, they apply for it, and they don't have to come back until max minimum. So right off the bat, they apply for it and they don't have to come back until max, minimum?
Maximum.
Maximum three years. And I think with earth removal, I think we should be looking at it at least once a year.
The first one, I would think, should be at least a year, at minimum of a year.
Well, and, and just to make things simple, would it make sense to follow the model that we have now, where they all remove, renew in August? Like, you get your first permit-
Yeah, that makes the most sense.
It's good for at least a year. And have a metric so that, like, everybody comes in, because, I mean, one of the earth removal people has eight permits, nine permits? And, okay, they just all batch together, you know what I mean? And then if they open up another permit in another area, it just gets rolled in with the other ones. Not that they start with one permit, get another one, and now they come to town hall three times, you know?
So if it's August 1st and everybody has to renew August 1st, somebody applies August 1st, they'll be the one year, but everybody else is less than a year?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So somebody could apply in July and then have to come back a month?
Which is the way it is now, I think.
It is the way it is now, yeah, and it's not prorated. I shouldn't say that, at least it used to be the way it was.
So you want it to be permit for one year? Do you want to allow renewal for B, to be up to two years? And that way, after one year, if you have an operation that comes back and there's no complaints, everything seems to be running well, you can say, all right, we'll see you in two years, or-
That probably makes sense, well-
Or you can say, we'll see you next year.
See you in two years at the same time.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And you want to set a date when they all expire? Permit shall be renewed annually by?
I'd say either July or January, somewhere in there. Avoid town meeting time.
June 30th or December 31st?
June 30th, because that gives the opportunity, that makes it more sense for the zoning officer to view the sites.
That's fine.
Trying to do it in December, he's not going to be able to see much.
What month does the fiscal year change?
July 1.
So do you want the potential for two-year renewals or just one year?
What section are we at?
One forty-nine. Second paragraph here. So, "In no case shall a permit be issued initially for a period longer than one year."
Yeah, I'm fine with the wording, it is a permit, present, may be renewed for up to two years or a lesser time. So, that's fine.
So then three to one and then rest stays the same?
Yeah. I would, rather than a public hearing may be required by the permit-granting authority?
Yeah, it should be.
I think, I think we should, we should have, shall be. And not add it to discretion. I think we should have, when we're renewing permits, we should have a public hearing.
So that's not A you're talking about? Because it does say-
B, the last sentence in B. I think a public hearing should be required when we're renewing permits.
Well, A already requires a public hearing.
It's for the initial.
But that's for the initial, but not for the renewals. It just gives the abutters an opportunity to come in and be aware that there's a hearing going on.
And then I'm going to add a C that says, "Permits shall run July 1 to June 30." All renewals must be completed prior to June 30.
So where does it say that A is for initial and B is for renewal?
Any person wishing to obtain-
Obtain a permit.
In A.
In A, obtain, okay, so, but, I mean, how does it, how does it say B is?
Public hearing shall be required by the PGA for renewal of permits. Last line.
Well, I'm looking at public hearing, not permanent procedures, sorry.
On the public hearing renewal, do we do notification of abutters or do we just put it in the newspaper?
I would say it's going to follow the public hearing process.
Okay. So the applicant would pay for that?
Correct.
All right, so is the fee required for the renewal as well as the initial?
Yes.
So does B, under one forty-twelve, give the building inspector the opportunity or the right to enter the site to conduct inspections at any time? Is that what that intent is?
I mean, it doesn't give him unmitigated right to enter the property, but he is the enforcing agent and if, to the extent permitted by law.
Okay.
So he, if he were concerned that there were a safety issue, could he enter? And yes, could he go to a judge and get an administrative search warrant? Yes, they usually will issue those within 24 hours if it's, if it's something concerning. In most instances, it's going to be if authorized by the owner.
Okay.
I mean, I know that this past summer, all we did was call Keating and say, we want to come down to inspect. Great, tell us when you want to come, we'll meet you and we'll drive you around, and, I mean-
Well, they're going to have hours of operation, right?
Correct.
I would think that the officer would be able to visit during any one of those, during, during operation.
Correct, but if you just drove over to Keating and decided to pull into the quarry, that's-
Problematic.
Yeah.
There's a public road that goes, oh, the quarry, right, yep.
So, you know, would he be within his right to be in there and inspecting that? Possibly, is it really the most intelligent, logical thing to do? Probably not. I mean, those things could run my car over without even, you know, having a bump.
My truck could almost.
But that's just, you know, it's one of those things where it's in there as a, if we need to, we can exercise it, but in most instances, it's cooperative.
Okay. And the fines are daily, is that?
That's, yes, if there's a violation and we move to a finding, it's usually first offense, second offense, third offense, and then each day is the subsequent offense.
Well, I think you should add that, I know conservation has that, each, it says something like each day is considered a separate offense.
The penalty for the third and subsequent offenses shall be three hundred dollars. In F.
Each day such violation occurs continues. Yeah, okay, okay. When you talk about non-criminal disposition procedures of MGL, Chapter 40, 21D, do we have to have adopted that? I know there was, we have, okay, because there was a question at one point that we were enforcing fines, but we hadn't adopted that or something.
Not to go back and forth on things, but on two of the exemptions, I'm wondering how that works. So C and D provide exemptions for landfalling in a floodplain and wetlands areas. But do we want to provide an exemption from, like, the soil testing and seasonal high groundwater? Because those aren't required through conservation or the floodplain by law.
Yeah, why are we exempting that? We're exempting work within?
The Wetlands Protection Act, Wetland Protection bylaw. I think the intent is, they've already got to go to conservation, but-
Correct, it's governed, it's governed by a separate authority that-
Yeah, but conservation is very different than earth removal. Why would we exempt operations within wetlands? I would think we would want, we would want to be more stringent in that case. The Wetlands Protection Act doesn't talk about earth removal, it wouldn't require the soil testing that we're requiring, it wouldn't require the buffer zone protection, it wouldn't have all of the safeties that the permitting ber-
But it's only covering earth removal within, so it's not any project that has a portion of it that requires conservation, it's the removal of earth specifically within-
I think that's really murky.
Okay, then we can take it out.
I think-
And all of this stuff has been in there the whole time and-
Now, I think we're just looking at it closer, I think, but I didn't catch on to that.
But, I mean, we've had the bylaw for three months now and-
Okay, but every time you look at things, you notice new things, Adam. I think, I think that one-
I know my brain works under the concept of, if it wasn't for the last minute, nothing would get done. And we're approaching the last minute, so now it's going to work.
We're taking out C and D?
Yeah, I don't know why we would exempt those.
I feel like those two particular areas, as Paula said, are of more scrutiny.
So basically, they're just exempting the requirement of a permit from-
Exactly.
But I honestly don't think that conservation would give them a permit to have removal within a resource.
Well, then it's a non-issue, right? But why, why-
Yeah, no, so we're getting rid of C and D?
Yeah.
I concur. Any dissension on that? And F, I mean, isn't, removal only applies when it goes off the site, right?
Correct. So if you had a 50-acre farm and you were digging out 1,500 cubic yards or 1,800 cubic yards at the southern border of your farm and moving it to your northern field, that wouldn't be earth removal.
Okay. Okay, so that makes sense, I guess.
And it says they're exempted as long as they don't exceed the thresholds. And if they're violating conditions within here, they can be required to obtain a permit.
So the caveat to F exemption, that it could be on the same lot, but you need to use the town way to get it from one place to another?
Correct.
Which makes sense, I guess.
And I think it would be incredibly rare that you had to use town way to move from one part of the parcel to another.
As the years go by, rarer and rarer.
I agree.
Yeah, if you had wetlands or something.
More and more rare. All right, I think that's a good job.
So I guess my, my takeaway from this is I'll make the changes to the bylaw. It sounds as though the board is still looking to add screening standards to Section 5 of the regulations, Section 5.2, try to beef that up some. So I'm going to make the changes we talked about tonight to the bylaw and send it out and notify people that will be meeting, I think it's probably March 11th, that our first meeting in March is. Calendar opener in front of me right now, but I can't. I'm sorry, it'll be March 9th. Went the wrong direction. That we'll be having a public forum on this that night. And at our next meeting, we can look at the regs and I'll send those around after you guys have verified that you're good with whatever restoration or screening standards we add.
Sir, we can go through them.
We can, yeah, I mean-
I've got a couple of things I picked up on. One, under 5.7, "All excess roads shall be treated with stone or suitable material for a distance of at least 200 feet back from the public way." I feel like we need to have language in there, so in case they don't have 200 feet.
Think that could be a waiver?
Okay.
You mean as far as the property not being 200 feet deep and then performing earth removal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or like the project that was just here, that drive wasn't 200 feet.
No, I mean, maybe, maybe 100 feet is, is reasonable.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is a function of how well it's maintained. If you have 100 feet and you go through it with a machine and scarify it up a little bit and add a little stone, that's just as effective as 200 feet that you put down and never touch again.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll change it to 100 and we can, as, as you need can waive.
And then, I thought we were trying to avoid the observation wells. I know it's, it's mentioned at 5.10. And then I saw it on 4.1.
Oh, I'm sorry, I-
1.7.
Oh, yeah.
The groundwater elevations based on observation wells.
Yeah, we were just going to do the soil scientist. I would say as determined by a, six feet above seasonal high water table, as determined by a soil scientist, right?
And then under-
Hold on. I'm just going to say as determined in Section 5.9. 4.17 groundwater elevations based on-
So it's interesting that the clear indications of groundwater are prevalent in the materials that are not going to be desirable for excavation. However, in the materials that are desirable, it's-
Hard to find.
Well, I mean, there's, it's very, very hard to find the redox features in the-
Grab.
In the granular stuff, yeah. In, in the granular stuff, yeah. It's seldom there, but sometimes it is.
And under 5.9, so the applicant performs a soil evaluation, are we requiring them to meet the Title V standards? Is this something that like the Board of Health would witness or...
The thought was just using those standards and soil evaluators are aware of those standards and just keeping consistent since we're talking about in 5.10, meeting those same standards. So...
They have to certify it. It's their, it's their stand.
It's an established baseline that people are familiar with and just, again, consistency.
Yeah. I'm just looking for clarification, that's all.
Yeah, for septic system siting, it has to be witnessed by the Board of Health. But, I mean, they're going to certify on the plan that they certify where it is.
5.13, temporary shelters of buildings, do we care how they're screened? I would say with vegetation or with...
That probably makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Well, plus, public view is the right of way. It's not necessarily the butters.
Mm-hmm.
So you're only protecting...
State of butters and public view?
Just screened from view?
I don't know. I, I grew up on a farm and I had 45 single-family homes pop up across the street and I find them visually offensive. There was no screening required for those homes. Just one of those comments I like to make, everybody's perspective is a little bit different.
So what's the takeaway from that?
So they're going to put up a shed to store stuff in for soil removal and you're going to have to require that to be screened from, from the passerby's on the road. I just like mentioning it every once in a while.
No, no, I mean, what's the take, what's the consensus? Are we screening it from view or are we screening it from public view? Are we eliminating screening requirements?
So for me, I want to screen the whole operation. So it goes back to me for screening the operation from the, from the butters and the operation is already required to be screened from public view. So to me, I don't care about the buildings on the site because the operation itself is screened, right? Well, I guess you could have a building outside of the operation. I guess that could happen.
Is the whole operation screened from public view?
Well, that's what...
There's, there's a sentence that says that. I thought there was.
No, that's what you guys want in 5.2. Whenever existing natural vegetation occurs, it shall be maintained on the land undisturbed for screening and noise reduction purposes.
Yeah. I thought I read somewhere...
Tanner's point and what you're saying is you'd like more specific screening requirements that cover the parcel as a whole and that needs to be written out.
Yeah. I think we can take out the screening requirements for temporary building...
So you think you can take, you want to take out 13?
I do too.
In the scheme of things, I look at that as being very, a minor part of the puzzle.
Mm-hmm.
And under Restoration Standards 6.1, we'd need to adjust that.
Yeah, to 3 to 1.
And does 6.3 conflict with our requirements to, well, I guess the current bylaw says every 60 days, if you leave something undisturbed for 60 days, you have to seed it.
On stockpiles, I thought it was 21 days in the stormwater.
Okay.
So I, I, that's just a thought. I'm pretty sure that's...
Yeah, and, and the reason it was September is...
That's a seeding window.
Yeah, and I mean, I, we could do it July 1st, but that's going to be brutal. They're going to just, you know, they're either going to be spending a ton of money on water or they're just going to keep hydroseeding, 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 which may be good for whoever they contract with, but isn't really going to get us anything.
I just feel like we need to develop a little bit of the standard there so that, I mean, this really applies to the permanent seeding. So I guess if they have stockpiles or something, they leave them undisturbed for 30 days and, or 21 days.
And I think that's something we can condition in the permit. We can come up with a series of standard conditions that all permits would get.
I have no more comments on it.
No, me either. I'm good.
No, we good?
Yep.
All right.
I'll make the changes to the regs and bring them back to the next meeting and the bylaw stuff I'll change and send out.
Super, thank you.
Now, do we have slots already reserved on the...
Not yet. I mean, we have... They are coming.
Okay.
So...
And the current configuration is an article to ask for...
Well, I'm waiting to confirm with council that that's not a problem, but that would be, it would be one to cede authority to the planning board for the existing bylaw and then one to go over the, the new.
Okay.
Or to change to the new.
Now, we, did, did we bring that up? Was that, was that our desire?
Mm-hmm.
At the last meeting.
At the last meeting, yeah.
Okay.
And I think at the very least, if we just get the permit granting authority, then we've streamlined things for the applicant because they can come to us for stormwater and earth removal.
Yeah, but it's still going to be 10, if it loses, if the other one, second one fails, it's still going to be 10.
Mm-hmm.
But at, at least they just come to one meeting. Because we can run the two hearings.
Concurrently.
Concurrently.
I mean, you, you're essentially having one hearing and issuing multiple decisions.
All right, I guess we're all set with earth removal. Now we're on to stormwater.
So again, we, we have the bylaw. I know, I think Paula, it was you who said you wanted, or was it you, Matthew, who wanted to try and increase the amount of lid in the bylaw?
It was me.
Yeah, I would definitely concur with that.
You know, I'm not sure how you would like to do this, if you want to expand what's in here, if you want to, I guess I'm, I'm, you said you wanted to look at, at some other bylaws and, and you had some other thoughts, but...
Well, I think, I think it would, it would be sufficed to, to put in something like in, in, in A and B soils, lid is required.
Okay.
I mean, so everybody knows lid, right? Low-impact development?
Mm-hmm.
And then A and B soils are finds and well-sorted sands and gravels, which is readily...
Permeable.
You're right. Will readily accept infiltration rather than pipes and, pipes and structures.
I think that makes absolute sense.
The underlying soils are A and B. So the underlying NRCS soil types, groups, A and B, kind of thing.
So where it says low-impact development, site planning and design standards must be implemented unless infeasible in order to reduce the discharge of stormwater from development sites?
Yeah, because infeasible is like practical. It's useless.
So you would like it to say must be implemented in all...
I would just say in, if feasible, I would leave that. I would say we want low-impact development on all the sites.
On all sites.
But then add a sentence after that, so if feasible in order to reduce the discharge and then put a, then add, LID is required in all sites with A and B soils.
So what, what section, where, where are we?
Number 2B.
2B.
Couple pages.
204, 2B.
It's the beginning of the strikeouts.
And are you sure on the date? I would say the current Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook because that's subject to change.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, hold on, all parcels. Where are you, Paula?
On C.
Uh, I would just add comma as amended.
Because I think there's a newer version even now.
So...
They're, and they're actually in the process of rewriting it.
Yeah.
So can you read to us?
Yeah, I don't know that I want to say as amended. I want to say current.
The requirements of the current Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook.
Do you think it...
As amended is, is the...
Is the proper language?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that way, every time they amend it, it's not, you're not trying to figure out current, you're just saying the, um, I'm sorry.
What, did you want, Matthew? Um, but, so we're talking about C, right? So basically...
Stormwater management system design shall be consistent with or more stringent than the requirements of, I'm going to take 2008 out.
Exactly.
The Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook as amended.
Okay, that's great. Okay, you're taking out 2008.
So I wanted you to read back what B says now.
Low-impact development, site planning and design strategies must be implemented unless infeasible in order to reduce discharge of stormwater from development sites. LID is required on all, all parcels with A and B soil types.
Can we say unless infeasible? Can we say if feasible instead of unless infeasible?
Double negative.
Yeah. I think it should be implemented if feasible.
Might we just say practicable then?
That's fine, but...
Then we require it in A and B.
Infeasibles.
And how does that requirement work if you have a site where you have A and B soils in one area but not another?
Then they would have the opportunity to pipe it. Well, no, you can't pipe it and then still do lid. Well, you could, depending on the topography.
Do you want to do a percentage of the site? Do you want to do a percentage of the site?
In areas, in area, rather than parcel, in areas of A and B soils.
So that...
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So in any development in the area where they have the soils, they do low-impact and then in other areas?
They could do piping and they could do infiltration.
They can do more, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so now I'm seeing a deficiency here. If we're only requiring four test holes...
This is earth, this is stormwater, not earth removal.
Okay, so are we requiring any test holes?
Well, they have to do a stormwater to that.
Okay, so...
And they're disturbing more than 40,000 square feet, so they've probably done some test holes.
But we don't require any test holes.
We need to require test holes.
That seems to be the only way you can determine A, B soils, I mean, your soil types underlying.
Because I don't think you can take a requirement from one permit and apply it to the other.
No.
So...
Right, so, so if we're going to require lid in A and B soils, then we have to have some kind of a requirement to indicate where the soils are.
Right.
And I guess does the one, four test holes per five acres and one per acre thereafter make sense?
No, because you can dig two holes 10 feet apart and they do...
And have completely...
Well, and, and...
Yeah. Depending on the site, you may have a site where it's, you know...
You know what we could do? We could simplify this as shown on the, as, as shown on the soil maps. So they, they show Hinckley and Merrimack and all these other soils and they specify typical hydrologic soil group. So rather than Class A, Class B, we'll just use soil groups, which are effectively the same thing.
Now, would it make sense to allow the applicant to use their own testing if it helps?
Well, they, they were, there's a requirement for estimated high groundwater elevation areas to be used for stormwater retention, detention, or infiltration.
Why are we doing estimated? Why aren't we requiring a soil evaluation?
Isn't the soil evaluation estimated?
It is.
Okay, okay.
That, I mean, that's how you get estimated high groundwater.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So they are requiring test holes in the areas where you're doing...
Where do you see that, Adam?
It's on the third, fourth, fifth page. It is letter I under E, contents of stormwater management plan. I'm sorry, L, not I. The page before all the strike throughs.
It's the page before all the stri...
Go back one more page. Back one more page, Paula.
I'm sorry.
Here.
So those are the strike throughs, so flip one more. And it's L.
Okay.
It's actually estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation.
I would just add the sentence there, as determined by what you put in the previous one. I think it was 310 CMR 15 in accordance with 310 CMR.
I'm just going to say by a licensed soil evaluator.
Yeah, okay, either that or refer to the same thing we did in earth removal.
Certified, not licensed.
Uh, I'm also going to make a pitch for stop calling this a special permit and just call it a stormwater permit and have planning board be the PGA, not the SPGA because it's a general bylaw, it's not under 40A, it's not a special permit in the context that we generally adjudicate special permits.
So it only requires three rather than four?
I, I think you could make an argument that it currently only requires three because it's...
In the general?
Yeah, and it's outside of, of 40A. And I, I just think that if there's con... And I just think that there's connotations that come with calling it a special permit that it doesn't need.
Well, it doesn't say it in the title, where does it say it?
Well, SPGA is throughout this whole bylaw.
Oh, right, so, but it doesn't say stormwater...
It just says, but...
Yeah.
Without a permit from the special permit granting authority.
I concur with you that it should not be a special permit.
It should be just PGA.
Right.
Adam, on 2D, where did you get the 90% and the 60% of the TSS?
That's from the Phase 2 permit. And I didn't get that, that came from our consultant.
Okay.
Where is that?
2B on the strikeouts, just at the bottom of the other page. Yep.
See, I love 90%. 60% total phosphorus and 90% TSS, I love that.
So, how would that, that's, that totally doesn't go along with what we're doing currently? It says the post-development. We don't even post-construction. Oh, this is...
But this, the post-construction means that the BMPs that are installed after everything is finished and done should calc out to 90% TSS and 60% phosphorus. Now, they may be removing more than that, and we're not going out annually and testing them. We're saying the design criteria that they've put forth in their BMPs are sized and designed...
Given a certain area of...
Correct.
Okay. So, they...
So, similar to what we saw earlier this evening, he said we're getting 40%...
Forty-four percent.
44% TSS removal, and, I mean, they don't, there's no TSS there at all right now, so they're saying this design...
Well, and I would disagree that there's no TSS there right now, because a field takes in a whole bunch of TSS.
But, from a practical perspective, they're not measuring anything. There's no stormwater attenuation there. So, this, this design that they've put forward, they're not going to go out six months in and, you know, scoop out the basin and go, okay, we've had this much water coming. They're relying on the design calculations to, it covers this area, this is what the design does, this is what it's designed to do.
Right.
It's going to, it provides us with this part of the calculation.
Right, it's a calculation, but I just wouldn't argue that there is TSS now.
Well, correct, yes, but this is a math problem, not a...
Right, and I love 90%.
It's required, it's required under the new, under the 2018 Phase 2 permit.
Well, there you go, so...
And it's, and now there's a required 80% on redevelopment.
No, but that 44 is more than 100% that's required rather than...
Just for clarification, this is on for spring.
That would be the intent.
May? No.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, hypothetically speaking, we adopt this for a project like we saw tonight, when they do phase, their next phase, not to confuse, they would have to meet this.
Correct.
I think it probably makes sense to...
Yeah.
Communicate that to them?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'd hate to see them go through the whole construction process.
Sure.
And this gets passed at town meeting, which this, I mean, arguably, we need to come into compliance with our permit, so...
And the reality is, there are other ways for them to meet that than what they have currently. And quite frankly, when they build that, they're going to install a series of pipes and manholes, and there's probably going to be one or more Vor-Tecnic type separators that will produce additional TSS removal. Once they put in the deep sumps, that adds additional TSS removal, so they're providing 44% at the basin, based on the design of the basin, and that other 46% is going to get made up in the design of the parking area and whatnot. So, I will communicate that to them, but I think...
I just think it makes sense, because, I mean, from their perspective, this is something we know about, and we know it's going to affect their project, and if I was the applicant, I'd be real frustrated if I had these regs applied to my project, and as a board, we could have communicated that ahead of time, so...
It was going to be required to go on spring, but there was a recent settlement with EPA from people who sued them over the permit, and they gave us an extra year to do it. It's in our contract with our consultant for this year, which is why we've continued to move forward with it. So, we would like to wrap up the work with them. If it ends up that the board is like, oh, we're not comfortable pushing this to March, we can push it out to special in the fall, but I'd like to wrap up all of our work with the consultant on answering any questions, any alterations or changes that you would like to see in ensuring that those changes don't affect its compliance, and then we can talk about how, you know...
So, it's in the town's best interest if we're able to get this...
The sooner, the sooner is better.
Okay. Or at least get it to a point where we don't need the consultants.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a placeholder on the warrant for this right now?
They don't do placeholders, so once, I mean, I've informed the town manager that my intent would be to bring it to spring. So, we would, she's aware that we have three that would be coming this spring, the two earth removals and this.
And when do we have to have the warning finalized?
March 16th is when warrant articles are due.
Okay.
They usually print the warrant two or so weeks after that in order to allow it to be sent within, you know, printed and sent within adequate time and all that kind of fun stuff. And ideally, whatever we submit at the March 16th deadline would be as reasonably close to the finished article as we can. Anything, anything, anybody?
I'll be honest, I have not gone through this as thoroughly as I would like to.
Well, then we'll continue with, I mean, I'll put it on for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, if we could do that.
Sounds good. Solar energy systems bylaw.
So, we talked about trying to get more input on this and putting it off until after the deadline for town meeting, so I intend to put this on the 23rd March agenda for public discussion and input on where we're at, and what people might want to see, that kind of stuff. I haven't done anything with the bylaw since we last talked about it, because I don't think it makes a lot of sense to put a ton of time and effort into it if we potentially could be changing it drastically based on what the public says when they come in.
So, public hearing on March 23rd?
It's not a public hearing, it's a discussion forum.
Oh, right, because it's not, but when it becomes...
We don't know what we're crafting.
When it becomes an article, we'll be...
Yeah, you'll have to have a public hearing at that point, but, you know, we don't, I mean, we have some intended alterations, but nothing that's terribly concrete.
Well, and I think, two quick comments, one is, I think the screening is the biggest issue.
Yes.
And probably the easiest to address.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of nebulous issues that people have fundamental disagreements about and, you know...
And then, I haven't followed the state's updates on all the regs for the next rollout of SMART and so on, but I think it would make sense to wait and see how all that pans out, because we may find that a lot of these quote-unquote "issues" solve themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a deductor in there for clearing trees that makes these projects financially infeasible, then we don't really have to worry about buffers and clearing and so on, so...
Correct, I would just hate to rely on that and have two or three years go by and have a new program come out where they're like, oh, cut down whatever cheese you want. So, I mean, it's a reasonable point, but I think, even if it's, if it's done and it's just insolvent for them to do it, we still have it just in case it, somewhere along the line, becomes viable for them to do again.
So, the intent for March 23rd is to have a public input forum?
Correct.
And what have we done to make our...
Well, I wanted to make sure the board was good with that, and then we'll start advertising it.
Okay, okay, and the draft of what we've been working on will be made available?
Yeah, I'll put that up on the website.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I mean, I'll put the, I'm just going to put the screening stuff up on the website, because that's the majority of what we've worked on.
Okay.
And then we can talk about how it would get integrated.
Okay.
Pauline either habitat?
Yeah, and that's all in the screening, if I'm not mistaken. Paula, I'll look at it again, but yeah. Master plan, I spoke with the Donahue Institute, they will be getting me a quote later this month. It sounded like it would be a relatively quick project for them, and that we potentially have something in the spring.
Great.
So, between that, and I'm still working on getting the RFP together for the two chapters to get over to the town manager to have her, let's set for legal compliance, and then bring it up here and talk about the nuts and bolts of it.
So, does quick translate to inexpensive?
I don't know.
We will see. All right, anything else on master plan?
Nope.
Minutes approval?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of January 27th, 2020.
Second?
And this is for the general meeting?
Yeah.
Any further discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any public hearing?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 27th, 2020, and a public hearing for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports, capital planning is finished for the annual, for the year until next year. Stormwater task force and agricultural commission neither have met since our last meeting. TCP building design committee?
We met last Wednesday, we selected DeGiorgio Associates to do the work on the preliminary design and cost estimates, and so our next meeting is this coming Wednesday, and hopefully we have feedback from the town manager on negotiations and their timeline and so on. We're working in a very narrow window trying to get cost estimates done for spring town meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see how it goes, but there, we had three firms interview, two of the firms scored relatively the same. Roberts was 25 points and DeGiorgio was 27 points, so it was close running. Johnson and Roberts actually did the work on the library years ago, but DeGiorgio's a big firm, they have a very deep staff and hopefully can turn things around pretty quickly, so...
So, I'm sorry if I missed something, but the consultant put to come up with a plan?
Mm-hmm.
So, based on the studies that have been done so far, they're going to take that concept of putting Town Hall in TCP with community uses and school administration, and do essentially full-blown plans that are good enough to get cost estimates. So, they'll do a hazardous materials assessment, complete workup on roof windows, HVAC, electrical, and the concept being that when we go to town meeting, we would have a very good estimate that town meeting could approve to borrow against and move the project forward.
Okay, and they realize that this is Lunenburg Municipal Building and not Taj Mahal?
There has been a lot of discussion with, amongst the committee members about the budget and trying to keep costs in line, so we'll see how it all pans out.
Good enough.
In regards to the building, has, we talked about it our last meeting, about the lot lines, especially related to the Brooks House, did that letter ever go over?
It did.
Okay.
I sent the move over to you.
Okay, I missed it.
In, in our interview process and also in our discussion, before we selected candidates, there was a heavy emphasis on the civil design work and the hazardous materials assessment. Greg Roy is the chair of the committee, and he was very specific with the engineers to make sure that we were going to get detailed civil drawings that will take all of that into account. And part of the interview process actually talked about the Brooks House and the middle high school and so on, and how to manage traffic, and, you know, the queuing of cars out along Mass Ave, so...
Great.
I want to just make a comment on that, I think it was a couple of years ago that we were at a board of selectmen meeting, and I leaned over to Greg Roy and I said, hey, I bet you, I bet you those guys are planning would waive the fee for an A and R. So, anyways, so, open space, ad hoc?
Haven't met.
Land acquisition?
Haven't met.
MRPC?
They had a meeting the 6th, and I had another meeting and wasn't able to attend.
There you go. Directors items?
So, Tuesday, 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 Board of Selectmen is having a hearing on the ADA right-of-way transition plan, so that's tomorrow night, this room, 7 o'clock. I don't know if the hearing's at 7 o'clock, but that's when they start their meeting, so be there, you might not get a seat. The plan is posted on the town's website, it covers how to move our current sidewalk situations into ADA compliance, and costs and timeframes and that kind of stuff. We just talked about town meeting and the warrant articles. 322 Flat Hill Road has filed a request to withdraw from chapter 61B. This is the parcel that you did the AR on, a month or two months... This is the parcel that you did the AR on, um, a month or two months back. The filing was deemed to not meet the statute by Town Council. Uh, again, I think it's a matter of a technicality, so I expect you will be seeing that in the near future, uh, meeting the statute, so you'll-
The A and R didn't meet the statute?
No, no, the, the filing with the town for the withdrawal didn't meet the, I don't know if it didn't have a qualified offer or they were missing this piece of paper or that piece of paper, but it's, it's not uncommon and usually what happens is they send it back, the applicant's lawyer says, oh, let me do this other thing and we have a qualified packet.
And when it's determined to be qualified, we have 120 days?
Correct. And we'll receive a request from the Board of Selectmen to note if there is any planning purpose that this board feels it would be necessary or important for, uh, that property to be taken.
Right, and that goes to the open space as well?
Yeah, we, we generally send it to open space and say-
We send it?
Yes.
Okay.
Because open space isn't listed-
It's an ad hoc planning board.
Yeah, so we make sure it gets over there and say, hey, let us know or let the Board of Selectmen know.
Okay.
They, they have a series of criteria, as you know, that they review and under.
Have we gotten any feedback from the Board of Selectmen in regards to meeting about the master plan?
No.
And when did that letter go?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It was two meetings ago.
Early to mid-January.
Was it two meetings? I guess it was.
Yeah. It was two meetings.
So our work is definitely overlapping when we talk about sidewalks and ADA, you know, transition plans and it's definitely-
Well, but that's, that's maintenance matters-
I understand that, but-
And I understand that that has implications on other planning matters, but yeah. Uh, and an item that's not on here, because I didn't have an answer when we did the agenda, but I spoke to the building commissioner about the A and R on West War Road and he didn't feel that, um, that section of the bylaw was triggered by the A and R process or by developments that were done, you know, years and years apart. He felt that it was consistent or a development plan for a parcel that included, uh, 10 houses.
So you're back to the nine or 10?
Correct.
Okay, because you lost me there for a minute.
Sorry.
Okay.
So he felt that it didn't, it didn't apply to that situation, uh, and he said he'd be happy to, to write a letter explaining his logic if the board wished.
Well, we asked for input and we got it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we feel we need a letter? I mean-
I'm fine.
It's already come and gone.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, actually, no, I can, I can have an offline discussion. Um, my own curiosity. All right.
What, would you like a letter?
I would like to hear his reasoning on it, but-
Okay, well then, let's get his reasoning. I mean, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that, that, that meets our required housing stock to, to avoid 40Bs and I think it's imperative that we take advantage of that every opportunity we get.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't want to hold anybody wrongly to it, but, I mean, how-
We don't want to miss opportunities.
Right, I mean, we've gotten nine lot subdivisions left and right.
Right, right. And then you add a 10th lot, you wait a year and add a 10th lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyways, um, all right, so we on the notice and communications?
Correct.
That we're scanned to us?
There you were.
Now we're on the meeting schedule?
That's correct.
Awesome, we got February 24th, we got something in between that and March 23rd, I assume?
March 9. March 9. No, it's going to be Earth removals.
All right, so we've got the continuation from tonight to the 24th. And is that the only thing so far? There's-
There's stormwater on there.
Okay, yeah. All right, ongoing?
Still ongoing.
Solar Energy Systems, we touched upon. Off-street parking and loading is just-
I think, I think this, the board said they wanted to wait till they finished Solar Energy Systems before we got into that. Uh, we can flip onto that in the summer if you would like.
Um, I, I'm, I'm reluctant to say take it off because I'm, how's it-
Oh, I'm not going to take it off.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just talking about when we-
Well, I don't really want it on there if we know we're not going to talk about it, because the abundance of public participation, um, I wouldn't want to mislead them.
But if we leave it on there, um, it, it gives you the opportunity, A, to talk about it if you want to, uh, but it also shows continued holding of it on the agenda as time goes forward and you get to it, it's-
Awesome. Okay, so we, we touched upon master plan. Public comment?
Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive, um, a little nervous to bring it up, but it's been going on for about three years, marijuana prohibition. Um, we've all worked towards it through some type of admitted clerical error of our town manager. We lost the opportunity to pursue it. Um, coming up on, um, town meeting, there's been no mention of it. Um, we still have the opportunity to just reoffer what was intended last year and what was lost. That would require, I think, the planning board submitting the warrant articles to town meeting and then the selectmen would have to put the ballot questions on for the spring.
So for one, I'm surprised you were nervous.
Well, because I just, it's just been going, I mean, these, I don't know, I stake, it just hasn't come up.
Mm-hmm.
And so then when I thought about it, I'm like, why hasn't it come up? I mean, it wasn't that people didn't want it or didn't want to see what the outcome was, it was a mistake by our town manager and she actually admitted to making the mistake with the ballot and we all lost the opportunity to have that as an outcome.
Was it the manager or the clerk? I think you said both.
Manager.
No, it was the town manager.
A clerical error of the town manager.
It never went to the clerk.
Um, so yeah, so with the opportunity to still put on the articles where I see we might not placeholder whatever we do with them, um, three, I think, was there six or seven warrant articles associated with marijuana prohibition? Um, where are we at?
Six.
And then we would have to, and I don't know what our timeline is for the ballot questions, but I just feel like that would be nice to give that opportunity back to the town. It was meant to be a legislative decision and it was actually just a mistake.
Well, wasn't it five and then six was the bylaw?
No, it, it's six because there are six types of establishments.
There were five, I think, at one time and then one had to get added on, so we added a ballot question.
We added the third, or it was the third. We added the sixth under advice of council.
Okay.
And the planning board doesn't have to submit the articles, they just have to hold a public hearing on any zoning article that's submitted. So it could be submitted by citizen petition, the selectmen could submit a zoning article if they wish to.
So as it was-
It's generally done through the planning board because they generally drive that process.
Yeah, I was just thinking of repeating what I-
It, it was made painfully clear to the planning board that we don't have the authority to call for an election.
Indeed, yeah, but it's a two-step process, so yeah, we have to do that part.
So would we be asked, are, are you asking us to, to rescind a bylaw? I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
I don't know what the process is, but I just feel like we lost the opportunity and I don't know why we wouldn't revisit it. Um, so I don't know if it probably needs to be an agenda item, I'm going to request that tomorrow night, that we have an agenda item to talk about what happened with marijuana. I think something or someone or something should have been accountable or something should have been done and at the very least just revisiting it might be a solution.
There you go.
So thank you.
I would welcome you to come back once you have that answer.
Okay.
And thank you. Um, any board comment?
Um, the only thing I picked up on is I don't know if we should try to schedule a joint meeting with the selectmen or, I mean, we sent them-
I think we've got an outstanding letter.
We've got an outstanding letter, we haven't gotten any communication back and-
I think I got a letter, just got it out there.
You are a selectman, are you not?
From my perspective on the TCP Building Committee, there are a lot of issues that we've discussed that all revolve around the master plan element and tying all of these projects together, whether it's the Brooks House, the driveway to the schools, TCP, the senior center, the skate park, um, and I think it's going to be really difficult for Town Meeting to move forward and support any of these projects without a clear understanding of how all the pieces fit together.
What did, I, I missed the letter, did the letter request a meeting?
I don't know if it, I don't, it was, well, the letter-
Requested cooperation.
It, it said the planning board wanted to work with the Board of Selectmen, didn't specifically say, can we have a joint meeting?
Well, why don't we just send a follow-up letter asking for a joint meeting?
I'm, I, I would have sworn it asked for a joint meeting. That's just my recollection. That would have been from you, right, Adam? It would have.
I just know there's a high level of frustration around the facilities in town.
It was probably around January 13th or 14th.
And I think the only way you're going to work through this as a community is to get some cooperation. So.
So the board would like me to request a joint meeting with the selectmen?
114 Memo to BOS. Well, attached. Here it is. How about record, right?
Yeah.
Currently, the Lunenburg Planning Board is in process of preparing to begin an update of the 2002 master plan. The board has identified two elements they feel are time in reviewing the materials with this, if you have a mind.
You're going to read the whole thing, Matt. You started reading and you faded.
Um, appropriate to commence the update. The first being community service and facilities which will address, will assess and identify existing and future needs of facilities and services used by the public. The second is land use element where existing land use is reviewed and alterations for the future land use designation are explored. Specifically, the relationship between public and private land use, uses is important as well as proposed standards for population and building density. In reviewing the materials currently available, it has been identified that there are some significant discrepancies in the available population projection data. Thus, the planning board intends to first pursue the population protection study to have that data more accurately reflect the situation in Lunenburg. The master plan is a long-term vision document, vision document for the town and the board feels it's imperative to use the most precise data available. I was scanning through to see if it was an invitation, but, so with this information in mind, the planning board feels it is the best interest of the town of Lunenburg for there to be a coordinated effort between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board on both population projections and the community facilities and services element. There is also a hope that this coordination can be a basis for additional collaboration between the two boards in the future of the old primary school and other long-term plans as they are formulated. Please let me know if you require any additional information or would like to discuss this matter further.
Okay, so we don't ask for a meeting. So you said you're talking to, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the group, the Donahue Group.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when do you think you're going to have an idea of how long?
She said probably late February to early March, she'd have a, an estimate over. And she said that depending on when stuff got signed and all that, it'd be April, May before we got projections back.
That's really unfortunate.
Now, that could be quicker, I mean, part of the delay is it's a census here and they're the lead state contact for the Census Bureau, uh, so they're kind of busy with some other stuff that, you know, has long-term implications, uh, but it didn't sound like it was a massive project that was going to drag on and on and on.
Okay. Well, I still think it makes sense to try to schedule a meeting as a follow-up of our correspondence of such and such and, we'd like to schedule a joint meeting to discuss-
And I mean, I sent them a, a letter today requesting a meeting between this board, then the school committee and the, uh, I said today, I don't know when I sent it, um, the school committee and the TCP BDC to review the Brooks House and the TCP and the-
APDC?
Oh, and I, yeah, I included the APDC, um, and the high school, because all of them are on one parcel and everybody's got different plans about what each of those things are going to do and at some point, that's all going to come to a head and-
Yeah.
So that was what the board talked about at the last meeting.
You sent that today?
Uh, I, I said today, I don't know when I sent it.
Did you include us?
I sent you copies of it today. You, you saw that letter.
Okay, I just-
That, that, maybe that's what I was thinking. I think I sent it to them last week sometime.
Oh, yeah, Feb. 4, Brooks House. Yep. So that was distributed to us.
So that's requesting a meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so I just think when we get the response from that, we can add to the agenda.
I asked them to indicate dates that was planned and that would be appropriate.
Yeah, no sense to send another letter, we'll just put together an agenda.
All right. Any board, any further board comments or concerns? All right, well, into the drill.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a discussion on adjourning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.